Chair Gibson, commissioners, what you have is Karina's best attempt at track changes for every last thing I changed on there. But yes, we took the new school application, Ms. Brown and I walked through it and made a few changes. I can just talk through them. We removed the word kit because what the school is submitting is actually the application and this is the kit. So you'll see that in repeated places. Do you want me to screen share to the pages that I'm referencing while talking? Okay, let me, let me pull it up. Okay, let me make sure that this is the one that's still this, not the accepted changes. No, that is, okay, hold on. I put it on October. I realized that we hadn't been talking about it. I don't know.
We just finished the calendar and scheduled you for all the important family days in your life.
I was on, I was listening. I was on my phone. On the Zoom session on my phone, I should say.
I'm having a hard time screen sharing because I downloaded it as a document. I want to screen share this. I'm going over here. Okay, there we go. Oh, okay. Yes, awesome. Okay, so I removed the word kit where it didn't belong. This is actually in the overview of the process, commissioners, and I added a couple of steps that are part of what the technical review for, that the charter schools division does, just so that we're super clear about looking at the application before we start to review it with peer reviewers. And so I added the application provides evidence that the school submitted the facilities plan to PSFA. And then.
Can I just ask on that?
Sure.
I struggle with this because, so when you're saying the facilities plan, what, what exactly are we talking about? Because there's no way a school can identify, we're going here. You know, and I know there's been years where we've, we've gotten the real estate, commercial real estate book, literally, and schools have said, this is what we're looking at. So I want to be realistic in our expectation of a school. So is the, is the expectation that the facilities plan is, school anticipates it's going to be a size of X, so that therefore they're going to need a facility that is this big, big and meets or needs this amount, this, these requirements. And that's what they're submitting to PSFA or, you know. I, I, I struggle with this. I, I hate to be, I know I think it's in statute that they have to, I think that they have to do this, but I think the guideline, I, I think it's just hard. So Missy, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gibson. The, PSFA has an activity, basically, like a checklist. And so I think the function of it is to get across to these new applicants how incredibly difficult it is to find a facility that is, has the occupancy and will meet their needs. But it's, and it's changed over time with the PSFA and what their checklist is. But it's, it's like a precursor activity for the schools to be able to do so that they are getting out a bit of a test run and how, what it all is going to take. We've certainly had to train them over the years, like you can't, this is not, PSFA is not going to come out at this time and look at facilities. It is, and, and, you know, they don't, they just, in the, in the past, we did, they had to give us, you know, schematics and all these things, and it's not that anymore. The PSFA has a checklist that they have to complete and it's, and it's kind of getting them accustomed to PSFA, accustomed to what the requirements are of, of an educational building and then just how hard it is to find.
So it's just that they've completed that worksheet?
Correct.
Activity?
Yeah, checklist.
Right. Is there also the expectation at this point in time with the application that they've, that they've communicated with a school district and the school district has already said yea or nay?
I don't remember if that's on the checklist.
I know.
PSFA used to require, or PEC used to require an email that was a response from the district or any public entity because somewhere it says that they need to first be, they need to be in a public facility.
Right.
So you used to require applicants to reach out to the district, the city, the county, and other public entities, asking about available space and then to provide the responses to that as proof that they fulfilled that requirement. So I don't know if Julia knows where that is in statute, the part about being in a public facility. This is the application contents and we're merely ensuring that they fulfill that since it's in your application kit as well.
I just want to make it, I want to make sure that schools are clear as to what they need to submit. So if it's that activity kit, that's fine. But if there, if that assurance of communication with districts, other public entities, I think that needs to be clear as well. So the schools know, I, this, I need to submit that now. And I know, I, I mean, I remember when the, when the law changed and it said you have to be in a public facility or in a lease purchase agreement where, in a lease agreement where the school is not being held to making capital improvements to the facility.
Right. That's a good question, and I think we can do a little bit more research on the facilities. But for the purposes of the initial submission.
Well, I think it, it would have to be, because if it's not in that initial submission, because they only get one shot at submitting the application, they don't get a second go at it. So it would have to be there. When else would they submit that?
I mean, I think what you're asking us to do, and I absolutely concur, we can do this, is to meet with PSFA and review their process for when they work with new charter applicants, because we rely on documentation from them. So we should probably scour all statute and rule as it relates to charter school facilities and that, that, that public building first requirement, because I remember that, Patty, excuse me, Chair Gibson. And, and so I would want to make sure that we're following that. But I think that it should happen at, when we very first receive the application as part of the technical review, just to make sure that the school is being legal with what, and, and fulfilling the expectations for the application. So I also added five, and we can talk about four and it comes up later on. I'm going to ask if we can hold off on that for a bit. But for five, this year, we received multiple attachments and appendices that were not required by the, the application kit. And because of the truncated timeline that we have and that peer reviewers have to really read the application very thoroughly, we are asking commissioners to consider a requirement that the schools be consistent across the applications that come in to use the templates and the attachments if we provide them, not in an altered form, but in the form and format that we, in sequence, that is part of this application kit, that they not submit more. And, and we did change, you'll see that I did change a couple of the appendices, and we'll get to that in a little bit, but that, that it be limited because the volume, and I'm sure one of the peer reviewers who's listening in might send me a text about how many thousands of pages ended up coming in as charter, as part of the charter school application packet that they send to us, the application. It, and then it's really easy for them to put so much more and, and say, well, it was in this appendix and whether it aligned and was in the body of the actual application, hmm, you know, it might not have been. But it's kind of like a dump of information that is a little bit much. And I think, you know, I heard some of you all say earlier that the application process has become a lot more complex. It has, and I totally support the high rigor. I don't know that I support the, let's keep adding more and more and more and more into these applications. I don't know that it is going to result in the better. And may I ask that? The editing not happen as I speak, like, this is my first attempt at showing the edits and managing that process.
I was just going to put in the citation that you.
I mean, I, I get the, the template part because I know on at least two occasions, we had, not this time around, but prior, we had schools submit their budget on a form that was not the form that was provided. And we couldn't, you couldn't read it. You actually had to print it out and take the pages and put them like that way. And it's like, no, it needed to be in this format so that everyone would be able to look at it.
The two additional things that I added are gone, and you could have done it or I could have done it. I don't know.
The attachments, I agree. The application shouldn't end up being 2,000 pages. You know, that's not, and people can't be digging to attachments, you know, or, you know, see attachment this or see attachment that. I think. But I, you know, there's also a piece of me that says, what are those, you know?
A lot of times, and anybody can feel free to chime in if you're staff person or in the audience and as a peer reviewer, but a lot of times they would, the applicants might cut and paste a complete curriculum, you know, map from the vendor that they're purchasing the curriculum from. And while that certainly provides a lot more detail, what the application is supposed to contain is a summary, really, or their own words about what they're proposing. And anybody can again, you know, go to, I don't know, the expedition learning website and copy and paste down what they propose for a school. But to then make it work with a total application is another task altogether.
Yeah, and I, I get that because, you know, the, the place for me for the applications is, why did you choose that? As opposed to, yes, giving me a detailed rundown of what, you know, project-based learning is. You know, I think we all know what that is, but why have you chosen that as your educational plan? You know, why is this important? And hopefully then through that, they, they get to expand a little bit on what it is. But yeah, you know, I don't need an instruction on what that is. I want to know why you feel that's best for you and, and the school you're proposing. I've been trying to.
Okay, so this should have been deleted because we moved it up there.
Okay, hold on.
I just moved, this was down there, but I wasn't in track changes.
You know, I guess, and I, I get, they, they can't use an old application and, but I think also when we were talking about applications, I hope we're, we're getting to a place where someone who wants to put in an application should be able to start on it now.
This is not substantively changed.
Yeah, but, you know, but if we change, if we change sequence and then they, you know, that's, that's where, I'm just saying, I want to be at a place where applicants have as much time as they can to be working on it and not be working on it and then say, oops, sorry, that was the old application. Commission changed it, so now you're disqualified because you used the, and they were using one from October of this year. You know, so that's where I, I hope we get to that place.
Okay, all right. And so these are just like, none of this is, like we, I don't think that these are hugely substantive. We changed the capacity interview to incorporate the idea that the applicant team members listed in, so to get really clear with the applicant, the applicants about who are the applicant team members and to ask them to list them in the application. And that, that is the body that goes to the capacity interview, and that is the body that comes before you at the, the decision-making hearing. And that during the capacity interview, we record the interview. It would still be the peer reviewers conducting the interview. CSD might be there to be timekeepers as we have been in the past and to just make sure that everything flows. But we would record the interview and make it available for PEC to review at a later date. So we'd provide the recording to you all so you could watch it.
So my question here is, with the highlighted piece, CSD has the ability to review scores for uniformity between applications assessed at the same time and review teams reviewing applications. So my question is, what gets done with that? If you, if you're saying you have the ability to review the scores for uniformity, what's the purpose of, so does that fall anywhere?
I highlighted that because I wanted to discuss that, right? So, so my understanding was that the review, the peer review team's report was the peer review team's report, and I wasn't going to go in there and change some of the ratings. However, I wanted to discuss this notion of needing to ensure uniformity of review because the way that we've been doing it now is that we hold a meeting with the peer reviewers to discuss that. And I think that we can put into place, like, bringing all the peer reviewers together at the same time so that everybody's hearing the same thing at the same time, because there might be a team that reviews application A that is very, that is a completely different set of people reviewing application B. And so I'm, I'm just highlighting that because I, I recognize that maybe that is an area that we use our continuous improvement processes to ensure that the, that that happens. But I wanted to clarify that there is no expectation that you would want for us to go in and modify a review team's rating of the application.
So then my, I go back to that question. If you put it in there, you have the ability to review and for uniformity between applications, what's the purpose of that review if you can't, if you're not going to do anything with it? I'm not asking you to do something with it. I have a concern about doing something with it. So I don't know what the, what, what that statement gets anyone because.
And that's not a new statement that was there, but.
In here, yeah, that's.
I know.
Okay.
So I'm questioning why it's there.
Yeah. Well, so I, I don't know if you were on the commission when this was first approved, but.
Oh, I, well, I, I don't know. But I've been on the commission when the director completely changed scores. So that I, that I've experienced.
Okay.
So I, you know, I have those scores.
I see Commissioner Burt's hand up.
Yeah.
Maybe she will offer some insight.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it can, if maybe this particular sentence can be changed to reflect what you just said, Karina, that CSD will, like, before the team does the review, CSD will make sure that the entire review team is uniform. And that way it's not the afterwards, it's that you're re, you're kind of, you're going to make sure there's uniformity going into the review, not after the review.
I mean, it might be, it is a bigger lift. I'm going to start off with, this is a bigger lift. But if with the, with the peer reviewers, if you did a sample of a prior application and talked through with them so that there, there was that review beforehand and everyone understood, this is, this is what we're, this is what we're looking for. So every review team is then going into this process with the same lens because you've had that instead of, I have more of a concern when you're looking after the fact, because once again, I don't see what that gets anyone.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Brown, but I believe during the peer review training sessions, you go through some readings and exercises where they are rating and discussion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think that.
Do you guys do that all together, like you said, Karina?
Sorry.
Is that done all together as one team, or what are you talking about, what's being split up and maybe not getting all the same information at the same time?
Yeah, great question. So, so the, what, what, I think you were asking earlier, Commissioner Burt, was that prior to reading the applications that we train the reviewers by going through some exercises of reading and rating to calibrate, right?
Yeah, I don't know why in my brain, I can't like think of the term, but I just remember when I was teaching, it's a super common practice, right? Like, when we would have a common final exam, the, the like four English teachers, we would get together, look through each other's essays and then, and kind of norm the rubric and be like, okay, we're all kind of, like, we would all rate this student the same way. And then we would go take our piles and go individually and then go and grade, right?
And then were there times, Commissioner Burt, where you would then come back together and say, you know, I want to talk about this particular part of the essay because, okay, well, maybe.
We did it, but it could be, it could be good practice, but I don't remember doing them.
Okay, so we definitely do the training ahead of time. And I think what I'm thinking is that there's maybe a time during where the review team members, no matter which application they're reading, have an opportunity to, to talk about what might be stumbling them up or what, you know, like, what are they thinking about? Or if they have questions, or if there's a need to then get further calibration with the actual applications that they're reviewing.
Yeah, I, I love that. I think that process makes a lot more sense than what's written here right now. And it sounds like a fair you guys are going anyway.
I have no problem with the peer reviewers during the process talking with each other. And if there's any issues, I always, I actually always thought they did. You know, so I, you know, if they've got a struggle or want to.
The, the process is that we train all of the peers together prior to June 1. And then the, we split them into teams depending on how many applications come in. The teams read their things, then they come to consensus. They come to consensus with a charter school person helping them through that process, scribing and, and answering any questions they might have regarding statute or regulations. And then they have a second consensus meeting to talk about what questions they want to ask and the school's specific questions. Then they have the capacity interview. They stay after the capacity interview to come to consensus on their ratings for the responses.
Right.
But I mean, any other, any other time in between there, like, that's, that has to happen in 10 days. Basically, reading the, all of the application, individually rating it, having a consensus meeting, coming to consensus, then having, you know, what are we going to ask as the school's specific questions, having the capacity interview, coming to consensus about, and then producing a report in 10 days.
And that's the way I always thought it was. So that's, if I'm going back, I don't know where that's.
So, so the difference between what we talked about a minute ago and what Ms. Brown described is that she's talking about school-based teams, and I'm saying if team application A and team application B, there might be at least one session where they come together in case there is a need for any sort of calibration across the teams.
So who's, who's managing that calibration?
I think there's team leads for each application.
Because then I'm looking at if, so you've got peer review team A, peer review team B. So there's a, who's determining that peer review team A is tougher? Easiest way to do it, tougher than peer review team B? Who's making that determination to say, you two, and they reviewed two entirely different applications?
Right.
So how do you come together with two entirely different applications?
That's what I'm saying, I think.
You need to come to consensus with me on your scoring of this application when I looked at a completely different application. That's where I'm kind of struggling with who's managed, who's making that decision that there's a inconsistency.
I can tell you that I didn't do this in time, but afterwards I could say that I made an assessment that there was some variation this year. And what I want is for that to be determined prior to you all getting the preliminary analyses. That's why I think team A and team B need to come together at some point.
Commissioner Teal?
My understanding, as I'm thinking through this, is team A might have a question or particular issue within the application. So they can follow with team B to get consensus on how to deal with that. So I don't think we're necessarily, my, my thought was is that we weren't comparing two separate things. We were just using the resource of the leaders of team A and team B to sort of combine and say, all right, so this is how I feel about what you're, you know, you're struggling with, with this application or whatever, so that they can, you know, get on the same page with that. That, that was my understanding.
But what I, I thought I heard was someone like Karina is taking a look at that and making a determination that there's an inconsistency. Not that the teams have looked at it, but there's. Not that the teams have looked at it, but there's then someone else saying, no, I think team A, you are a little kinder than team B was, so there's inconsistencies there that it's, it's an external, it's not a, I, I support that, team A and team B getting themselves together and saying, we really struggled with the budget and this is what we saw and then coming to some consensus as to, oh yeah, I think you were right. That's like still just those peer reviewers, not someone else kind of coming in and interposing their judgment that you were a little too kind. You know? That's where I, I have a little bit of a ruggle. I think if, I think it would, it would be a great idea if after team A and team B looked and they got themselves together and they saw that, you know, team B had, and it's still tough because the applications can be so different, but if you looked and you said, boy, you've got five workings to meet in this area, we only had one, maybe they do look at and they look through together those pieces to, and maybe there are, they were more similar in terms of the responses, you know, the thoroughness of the responses, not the substance as much.
That's how I think you cal- calibrate. I mean, that's how you're calibrating.
But not a, an external person saying, huh. Missy?
So I want to say that this past year, we had someone kind of in that function, which was Betty Sealy. She looked at all of the applications across. I think that it's just the timeline is so short, I can, I could see us trying to get peer reviewers where we have like, like a Betty Sealy who's going to make sure that across the financial, everybody is, is on, is doing what they're supposed to be doing. And then maybe we have somebody who's like an academic expert, then they can look over that stuff, but to ask the peer reviewers that are reading the application, if there's one application, then fine, we can do that, but when there's four, five, six applications, it's really hard with this timeline. The timeline does not grow with more applications and I think that to say, you know, you're going to get together and say like, well, who did you have that was worse? And I have to tell, if I have to remind Dr. Michael Kaplan that he's being too kind, then I don't know, I like, there's nothing I can do, like I tell them all the time, you are not doing these applications any favors to be kind to them, being tough on them, but of course, well, you guys have to understand, they will come back, they will resubmit. Reason they haven't been resubmitting is because they get a clear, clear sense that they shouldn't, but they will resubmit. It, they can have better applications.
And see, I kind of get the Betty Sealy with the finances, you know, because that's kind of, that's very black and white. You know, the budget's there or the budget's not there, it's a good budget or it's not a good budget. So that's an easy review. Those other pieces of the application are way more subjective.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, what, when, when I was at SMD and the instructional council chair, we were dealing with the teacher evaluations and the calibration of the teacher evaluations. And we struggled with this all the time because there is no black and white. It is a gray area. And Missy, I'm sure you do a stellar job of training them and working that calibration before they ever see those reviews. I think us and I, I went through all the, the processes this time. I think by the time we go through the input hearings, look at the capacity interviews, go through all those processes, we figure it out. And I think we do a pretty good job of figuring out, I don't think you're ever going to get, as compared to, to your point, Chair, a fairly black and white issue on the budget, you're, I don't think you're ever going to get, and that's what we struggle with, you're not going to get a black and white area on those other pieces. And I think they did, they do a great job of doing it and especially with the community input hearings. That opens our eyes, at least it opened my eyes, the strengths and weaknesses of each one. And when I, you go back and you look at the peer reviews again from after the input hearings, I think we, I think we do get it and, and it's working towards perfection, but it'll never be there because it's gray.
So do you...
I would strike that out. I would, I, I just, what, I think you do already what's anticipated, you know, but I think leaving that in gives the sense that somehow the charter school division is going to be able to come in and direct the peer reviewers to potentially rethink and perhaps change the ratings. That's how I read that. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's how I read that.
Okay. So, so that's good because I wasn't sure that that's what you wanted us to do. So now I'm taking the language that Becca, Commissioner Burt suggested about ensuring that there's uniformity and I might need to get...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't mind an assurance that, because that's already being done.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's...
And that might need to be wordsmithed.
The fact that there's somehow going to be a review by the charter school division after the peer reviewers and an ability to say, come back, you, you know...
Well, I mean, come back and let's talk about it, but not, I'm going to change your rating because I don't think you were, you know, that's what I don't want for us to do is to change their rating. But I do think we can and we should be meeting with the peer review teams to say, okay, like let's talk about the calibration on this item in the way that they, the, the...
So what's the purpose of that meeting if they're not, if you're not going to change the rating?
Oh, I, I guess my...
That's what I don't understand.
I would not want for you to expect us to go into what a peer review team did and change what they rated.
What's the purpose of the meeting?
The, the purpose of the...
Talking about calibrations.
Right.
Why? That's, so that's what I keep asking. If there, if, if the ratings have already been done, what's the purpose of talking about the calibrations when it's already been done and it's never going to be changed? I don't understand.
Well, I mean, I think it would need to happen before it's final, but I, I don't think, I think that, because we're noticing some different...
But if you're not going to have them change it, what's the purpose of the conversation? That's what, you know...
I think the peer review team is the only ones that change the rating, not the...
So why have that conversation with them? That's where, you know, that's where I'm struggling. If you're having the conversation about the calibrations and there's going to be no change to the ratings, what's the purpose of that conversation?
I mean, there could be, but I'm, I don't think that CSD is not going to, so you need to change this, but to have a conversation and say, let's look at what teammate, how team A analyzed this section and how team B analyzed this section and, and the calibration is the con- conversation about what were the ways that they were rated, right? Like what, what would, would one person rate it or one team rate it in the same way that another team would? That's the conversation. And yeah, it might, it might, it might... Well, when you say after, I think you're thinking maybe that it's been sent to you or to the applicant team?
I'm talking about, they've, they've finalized, they're, here's, they had the capacity interviews, they've rated the schools.
Okay, then how do we do this? If it says we're to ensure, what, what, what is your training that you talked about? So any work that we do with the peer reviewers is prior to them...
Correct.
Having an application and reviewing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Before they get their work started.
What do you think, Commissioner Beck?
Well, no, it's Steve and then Becca has her hand up. She's on the phone, so we can't see it. Okay, so I mean, I understand how he's concerned about why you have a meeting if you're not going to do a change. I think they should be able to be a change. If there's going to be a meeting where you're discussing the calibration and you're coming together and you're saying, you know something, this, this seems askew, this seems like on one hand, you're, you're looking at this through a lens that is so stringent, no one could possibly meet your expectation, and then on this application, somebody's looking at it with a different, different eyes, different life experience, and you're coming together to discuss that, their calibration, and then they came, they should be able to make that change where stringent guy says, you know, you know what, you're right. I'm kind of looking at you through this lens, my big engineer my whole life, or whatever it might be. And so there should be the ability for them to go back and tweak what they have before it's then released. I mean, I think, I mean, Becca and then I see now Alan has his hand up.
I'm on, I'm on the same kind of wavelength as what Steve just said and what Karina was talking about. So I, I guess the way I envision it is that, you know, they do the pre-training where you do the calibration ahead of time, but then, and I don't know, I, please forgive me, I can't remember if it was Missy or Karina that said this, but it was like, maybe on like day five, you bring everyone back together and, because there are some sections where you're going to, like, as I read through, there were some sections that were obviously good, there are some that were obviously not great. It's going to be those like in-between ones that are going to be the more difficult and the teams ideally by like day five, six maybe, they're going to have figured out which ones people are like in that middle of, and that's where you let the, the two teams, the three teams kind of be able to talk with each other. And I think it's CSD is facilitating this meeting, they're not participating in the meeting, they're just coordinating it, making sure they all come together, they know their purpose, they know why this meeting's happening. And that way the teams can get together and go, you know what, we were looking at, you know, their instruction and, and there was these parts of it where some of the team felt really strongly it was good, the other, and other parts of the team were feeling like maybe it wasn't so good. How did, what, what did you guys see when you were looking for instruction, you know, and being able to talk to the other teams about those kind of in-between ones? And then, but then I agree with Patty, once it's day 10, it is kind of what's done is done by then, but I do think, I, I appreciate the idea that CSD can ensure by facilitating the teamwork, by facilitating the collaboration and the calibration during the process and not waiting until after it, which I, and I'm, I'm on the same page as Patty, like obviously you don't change it afterwards, but I do think, I, I think where I heard Karina and Missy talking about doing it in the, in, during the process as well, that could lead to a change in scores, not from CSD, but from the teams themselves, and I think that's appropriate.
Alan?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, go ahead, Becca, if you're still, still doing it? Sorry, I thought she was talking again. I thi- I, I totally agree with you, Chair, on like the timing matters a ton because I think that the, the prevailing idea sometimes that gets out there is that CSD has the final say in like decisions, and we know that's not the case, we know that's not true, but sometimes people believe that. Like some things are, you know, if Karina meets with the team or Bridget meets with the team, then they're going to like help, help make, help improve the, the results. And I think that's, that's something we don't want to have in terms of optics at all. And I think we probably all can agree on, that I think that for me, similar to what Commissioner Burt just showed, I, I think that coming together, especially when we see results that are very different, I think that should help, help us like think through, like is there some, some bias there? And bias works both ways, it's not just bad. Bias is also, oh, we love this school, there's not a, you know, we've never seen a school model like this, or it's a farm school, Alan's going to totally go for that one, everything's great, check, 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 you know? There's a pre-dentistry school, Mike's going to be like, oh my God, that's so great, you know, like we just all have our biases, right? And we don't know those biases, we're blinded by those biases oftentimes, even though we have the best intentions. And so I think there's an opportunity, if we could kind of figure out how, how could we put some guardrails around that a little bit or guidelines around, you know, this is an opportunity for us to check through any biases or issues of equity, and what I mean by equity, like we're looking at Mike's school and we're looking at Tim's school with the same, as much as possible the same eyes, knowing that it's subjective still, but we try to think through, are we giving the benefit of the doubt for one school's financials, but not the other? And like, I think that does, I think that's an important task. And I think that only makes us better if we have some, some space around that. But I think we need to have like some pretty clear like directives for both the charter school division and the peer reviewers, so we don't change a lot of stuff, but we use it as an opportunity to truly calab- calibrate and, and kind of walk through what our results are looking like, especially around very glaring differences.
Missy, and then Commissioner Beck?
I was, I was just going to tell the commission that this year, one of the changes I made for the peers was instead of having the three categories of meets, approaches and does not meet, they had a meets approaches and approaches does not meet, they had five categories and that helped when they were coming to consensus within the team. Okay, so once they're put into teams, the two teams don't usually meet, but the team, and they're coming to consensus, it really helped them, they told me that, that they really appreciated being able, because they would be on the fence. And then they come to consensus, they talk, and so that, that helped, but then I put my hand down because I thought, it doesn't matter, it's not relevant to this, but I just wanted to let you guys...
Commissioner Beck?
Yeah. I, I sensed two things. Number one, again, when we were doing the calibration, we would go back, you know, we would see through the process that there were administrators that were much tougher than the other administrators, administrators that were much lighter, so through that process, we got better. It wasn't perfect, far from perfect, but we got better. And I think, you know, to Steve's point, Becca's point, and Alan's point, and I, I sense the reason why this is coming up is because Karina was uncomfortable at some level with some of this issue this year. If I'm, I might be talking out of, out of school, but I have a sense that that's why this is coming up. And if we could, if we could alleviate some of that discomfort through the process, and again, not the ending of the process, that might help everybody. And, and calibration is really, really, really hard and a very difficult process.
We were at a point where we agreed that the peer reviewers should be meeting with each other, even team A and team B, and to talk about, oh, you know, you had five meets and we had five does not meet. Except what I was hearing was the, not a facilitation, but that the charter school division was going to be the one saying, you didn't...
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't sense that.
It's more than appropriate that the teams have an opportunity to...
Work with each other.
Work with each other.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But that's not what was finally said. And that's where, that's the guardrail I want to see.
Yeah.
That it's the peer reviewers and the peer reviewers with outside nudging. Absolutely. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I wanted to confirm that there is no world in which we are changing the peer reviewers' ratings, but it is our responsibility to bring them together to discuss the calibration.
See, that's where, that's where I kind of lose. Yes, if you're bringing them together for them to talk with each other, but there's no suggestion by the charter school division that there's a problem with the calibrations. The peer reviewers need to see that amongst themselves.
And I think that's what, I think that's...
Amongst themselves. Yeah. That it's not someone saying, you two, team A and team B, there's a problem there, you should be able to see it through the scores you've given.
So I, I feel like we were at this place about 30 or 40 minutes ago and...
And the thing that stopped that discussion was the timeline. So we haven't discussed the timeline at this point. And the, the idea is, is something that is fantastic. Is it workable within the timeline?
I think that we just, what, what we have to do is provide a timeline to all the people that are applying to be reviewers ahead of time and make sure that there's priority around what the different meetings are. Because they're reading the applications, they're doing their individuals, then they're meeting for consensus with an application. And we just build into that a time when across the teams, they come together also to discuss any.
Yeah, prior, prior to it being published.
Prior to the, yeah, announcement that SWR, he makes the.
And I know it's people's time, but it's like one extra meeting.
It is one extra meeting. And it's a tight timeline, but it.
It should just be one extra meeting, you know? So, and if, if people know it ahead of time, they either say, yes, I'll do it, or no, I can't do that. You know, and I know it's not easy. Fine folks at times. I, I get that. But fortunately, they can kind of have on their own time, be doing that, the initial review.
Because one person can read, typically one person can read one or two applications. But when you start to get into three applications, unless you're like just reading the business section or the finance section, I mean, it gets really difficult.
Welcome to our world.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, um, can we move on to the capacity interview? Do you want me to keep that you guys see the recordings?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So then the community input hearing, um, I can't remember why I crossed that out.
Should it say we can be, um, I think it's community input hearing, but it should, shouldn't say the district in which the school will be located? Line one, uh, the first line of that, because community is so broad. So it's his, um, school district.
Okay, so now I'm, I'm reading what got crossed out and it talks about who was to be there. And, um, I'm trying to standardize by, okay, I'm just going to scroll down, sorry, to the definitions. Um, and so that's based on this, um, effort to create a new term called the applicant team. And so that the applicant team is the entity that is actively participating in the planning of the application. Uh, they're doing writing. It's those people that, um, might be on the, they might be staff. Um, but those are like, I, I, um, I spoke with some colleagues from another state actually, um, who have the term defined and that is a way that they can manage who shows up. I, I think what we've seen in the time that this group has approved charters is that maybe there's a founder listed in the NOI and then additional people listed in the application. And then who shows up at the hearing and who shows up at the input um, or the decision-making hearing could be like any number of individuals. And this is going to ask the schools to think ahead. Who do you want to consider the applicant team that is consistent throughout the process? Is the one that is, um, going to show up and be, so there's no question, at the input hearing, the capacity interview, et cetera, et cetera. And I see that, um, Becca has her hand raised, but real quickly before she go on to do that, I just want to let you know a little bit more thinking about that was that, um, that ends up being one of the, um, appendices, um, that we would ask the schools to complete. Um, so appendix eight provides guidelines and guidance to the schools. So they start to think about who is this team. I think for a couple of reasons. One is that I, I, I cannot imagine that everybody in this room would agree that an individual applying for a charter application is not going to demonstrate the capacity that a team would demonstrate. So in a way, it's also support for the applicants so that they go into it with a mindset of, I'm not going to be able to do this alone. I'm going to have to do this with a team. And so this is the team.
Becca, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I love it, Karina. I think it's a super smart move. And I also want to, so it, it made me think, so one of, I'm, I'm just going to throw this out there because I don't even know if it's appropriate. I don't know if it's something everyone else would even agree is a good idea. But one of the things over my last, you know, couple of years of looking at it, one of the things that I've, I feel like has been like a unspoken, um, not, not like a, okay, I, I, maybe I'll just, I'll just say, could we put in there that we would like to see a proposed head administrator? Or that it's recommended that there's a proposed head administrator, um, as part of the applicant team? I know it's not a requirement. I don't know if we should or could make it a requirement. But I have found that, um, I mean, it, it feels like a benefit to the school. Especially when starting to have a consistent leader that's part of the applicant team, that then also falls into that, those first years of opening. And like I said, I, I think it's more of like an unspoken, maybe it's a bias and it, it shouldn't be in there. But I do feel like it's something that has come up, um, you know, that it's, it's, it's more weary when we have applicant teams that then go find head administrators later. Um, and that, and maybe it's just like a recommended thing, not a requirement. But I wonder if that could like fit into this.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you propose to just do it as a question. Do you have, because, you know, um, because like, I'll go, I'll go to one applicant that we have knew this, they know what organization they're going to advertise to, to get the new head administrator. You know, so that they, they may not have someone here right now, but they know that this is the organization that, and we're going to do this immediately as soon as we have, you know, the funding. But I a hundred percent agree that there, that an identification of a possible head administrator is a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I somewhat agree and somewhat disagree. I think it's an applicant, uh, team glass or a term there and those individuals, if any, who will become school employees. And I think it's a question valid that when we go into the community input hearing, we can ask. You know, I mean, you know, um, I don't think it, I, I don't think it's, I don't, personally, I don't think it should be required because you're asking them to hire somebody when they don't have the funding or, you know, nothing's been completed yet, et cetera. But I think it's a valid question. You know, what's your plan for, um, hiring employees? When do you think you're going to be, or do you have any idea about who your head administrator is going to be? I think that's what we're there for in the community input hearing. I think that's what we're there for.
Well, not when we find in public until they're approved, if that head administrator is going to be coming from someplace else.
Yeah, it does. You're right. It becomes a challenge if they have a contract with someone at a school district and then they don't know yet that they're going to be approved. It could, it could affect their current employment and you don't want to do that to someone. But I think, yeah. A plan is good. Yeah, yeah. And, and I get it. Some people don't want to be ident- publicly identified yet because it, it could, there's, there, you know, you're holding a public meeting in the district they're working at.
And, and.
You know?
And, um, it's one of the, really honestly, for me, um, this last session, uh, it was definitely one of the red flags if they didn't have a plan. You know, so, um, you know, we don't have to spoon-feed them the plan. It, it, it could be a red flag to say, hey, they're not organized, they're not ready yet, you know? Um, so I, I, I like the way it's, I like the way it's, um, uh, termed in the definition of the applicant team. The, the only question I had, and it's like, for example, one of the, um, ones that we approved at the community input hearing, we, I don't know who was part of the applicant team, but the person was there who is their, um, council. Do we want to limit, i- is this a limiting factor?
I don't think so. I think it just asks them to name. So right, it's confusing, right? Because wait, this person wasn't listed in the application, but they're sitting there and they're speaking. What role do they have or did they have in the development? What role do they, will they have in the future of the school? And I think that they could list that, their council as part of the applicant team. This is going to force feed a little bit of clarification so that it's not ambiguous to us. There's no surprises.
You can say includes, but it's not limited to. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If you just add, but not, includes, but is not limited to.
Well, then that, then. The whole purpose. I mean, I think the whole idea behind this is name your team, tell us who they are and their roles and.
Unless they want to.
I'm sorry.
Unless they want to have their council, unless you added, you know, your council there, but they didn't want to have their council, their council is really not part of the team. But they already know who their business manager is going to be. I mean, I think, I, I don't think that non-limiting to limit defeats the purpose at all. And we can allow them to choose like their five or six people that are the foundation of their process.
Then they can just bring whoever they want, where, wherever they want, and that person is the spoke to, you know.
It's not always really, because we're going to be putting them under the microscope, you know?
At the CSD, when, when the commission gained the power to be an authorizer, I'll never forget the first round of applications that came in. Um, this was before like people started to use the word CMO and have a really good understanding that New Mexico was not opening its doors to somebody that wanted to make a buck off of public education. And so this like external, you know, CMO folks came to New Mexico. They found a few New Mexicans who they said were part of the applicant team. And then we had the capacity interview. Nobody from New Mexico could answer any of the questions. It was these people that were looking to make a buck. They had all the expertise, all the answers. All of the, um, application was what they did. And I think, you know, at that point in time, we of course recommended non-approval. Um, PEC agreed because the applicant team is really an important part of what the capacity is to have a high-quality charter.
Well, you know, I, I, I fully agree with that. I, I'm, I'm just saying like, so, so, uh, I'm thinking of, of one of the applicants this time that really, really impressed me. Um, they did have their council there. They did have their business, potential business manager there. They had, uh, what you would consider an applicant team of, I think, seven. Uh, and they were consistent in the community input hearing. And then when they came here, um, uh, to Santa Fe, um, and that impressed me, that, that made an impact on me. So I don't know, I don't know if we, we want.
Knew who that person was that was going to be the school's council before.
Really?
They, they knew that and they could easily, and what I think I would like for you all to ask the schools to do is to find out who, who that is in the application. So there's no ambig- ambiguity whenever we're at the input hearing and suddenly there's this person who we don't know what role they have played or are going to play. And it doesn't mean, you know.
Introduce themselves as the, as counsel. So there wasn't any confusion as to who that person.
Becca just said that it was ambiguous, the, the, or somebody said that it was ambiguous who this person. Now, somebody else said that.
So, Missy.
These are two different things we're talking about. Community input hearing, they can bring their attorneys. They can bring a business manager. It's the capacity. So you're saying you want a paid attorney and a paid business manager to be answering all the capacity questions with the peer reviewers? And not, not the applicant team? Because the business managers and the attorneys are hired. They are not grassroots. I thought the capacity interview was supposed to be the capacity of the founders. And so I need guidance because we kept Daniel Ivy Soto out of Equip Academies. We kept A-12 out of Equip Academy's commu- uh, uh, capacity interview. The team did a great job.
And that makes sense. That makes sense to me.
I thought we were talking about the community input.
No, we're talking about.
And our public hearings. I didn't think we were talking about the capacity. So I misunderstood.
Yeah, me too.
Cause I was talking.
That we were coming up with a term called the applicant team and that consistent throughout all the steps, it is that's, that's who shows up.
Now, that makes sense to me.
But I'm going to disagree and say.
I think that makes sense.
At the community input hearings or our public hearing, if they want to bring legal counsel, they're entitled to do that.
This isn't stopping them. It's just.
They can bring their mother if they want to.
They have to identify it early. Maybe they can't.
I agree with Missy completely in terms, and I withdraw the idea of, but not limited to. My idea with Missy completely, the idea of the applicant team not including like the paid business manager or attorney with them, and that's involves the foundation of who's building this school. And then they can bring anything they want.
I agree. I agree totally with that.
To you or to us. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I'm good.
I don't see us at any point in time turning to someone who's, who comes up with an applicant team and say, no, you can't sit there. I don't see that. I don't.
But I don't think that will happen because they can bring the, they can bring the, uh, business manager and the council to the community input hearing and introduce them as that. I think, yeah, I, I think that's fine. And I think, um, the app, the applicant team is really the, the founders and the ones that were instrumental in creating the, uh, application, right?
And the bottom line is, and this is to some extent, uh, an equity issue. The only one that's going to be able to bring a paid business manager or an attorney with them is a school that's got funding, that has some kind of grant funding prior to, dur- during the application process, not the implementation process.
And by not limiting who shows up to the different stages, you're privileging those people. And maybe you want to. Maybe you want those that have funding to support them in this process to have an advantage.
Already have the advantage. They already had the advantage by getting the funding to help them with the application process. So they, they already are halfway up the stairs from everyone else. They are. So, and there's, there is nothing we can do to stop that.
Alan and then Julia.
Matt and Chair, I, I think I, I've been wondering when to bring that, this, this part of the process. So thank you, Karina, for bringing that up. I, I, uh, I think that's the biggest piece of feedback that I heard from a couple of people a- after we made decisions. Like, uh, just like clarification about can I work with a business manager to help me develop my, you know, my financials and budget? That seemed to be a big thing that a lot of people were talk, like were, were unsure about. And it made me just think about, Missy, your, your, uh, training, like what, what do we say to people about? Yes, you can use, uh, business manager. I, I mean, I'm willing to bet, like, there's only three business manager organizations to choose from in this state. Some schools are lucky to have a finance director in their school, but seventy-five percent of them do not. They work with these three organizations. It's these three organizations to like maybe do a little pro bono work to help them at the beginning because they know they're going to be contracted and make at least seventy thousand dollars, uh, for a tenth of their time, uh, per, per finance director that they have on their, on their, their, uh, their payroll. And so I just wonder what, what was the missing thing there? Because that was the big thing that I heard. And through the experience that I've had and on all three levels of the, the three-legged stool that we work within, I've, I've never seen that big of a, of a mishap. Like I haven't heard that, I haven't heard that many schools like, or not schools, but applicants like kind of tell me like, well, I didn't know I could use a finance director to help me in the moment as I'm doing application work. So I, I'm wondering like, I think there is, we cannot do a single thing about schools that have, uh, So I, I'm wondering, like, I think there is, we cannot do a single thing about schools that have, uh, have a fellowship of some sort. Is that, there, there is funding there that's not public funding? And that's, that's great. I totally understand you're halfway up the stairs a little bit, as you shared, uh, Chair. Um, we can't do anything about that, but we, what we can do is, is to make sure that schools or applicants understand that they, they have, they can, like, negotiate these kinds of things or ask. And I just, I'm willing to bet these three organizations, it is their incentive, there is a huge incentive, um, for them. Uh, and hopefully I'm not overstepping my boundaries on this process, but like, the three one, I mean, A-12, B-Hill, Katie Rarick's group, I have no idea what that name is now, but like.
Axiom.
You know, Axiom?
Yeah.
Those are the three, like, that we can, we can, we, they most, almost every single school uses that we have in our portfolio. Um, and so there is, like, like, an incentive for them to support schools during the application time. And so I'm just wondering, like, and this might be a question for you, it might not be, but I'm just wondering, why was there such a disconnect this year, which I haven't seen in the past?
I can tell you, I do not promote the entities that are out there, but they do self-promote. They see the public information so they can reach out. Um, I say a lot of things. I cannot make the applicants hear it. I'm taking that horse to water. I cannot make it drink. They know that those entities are out there and they do do it pro bono, both the attorneys and the business managers. So in past years, Katie Rarick's group, Axiom, has asked to present to the new applicant schools. Let them do that. Didn't ask this year. So.
Yeah.
They, I do tell them you can work with. Um, I mean, we had an applicant years ago before the pandemic who asked us, asked me in May if I could help them with their budget. And I said, no, I'm not going to help you with their budget. I've had applicant teams in the past couple of years who have wanted school budget to help them with their, and I tell them, no, you cannot have school budget help you with your application. But, you know, so they do know, they do, it is said, but I cannot make sh- I mean, I guess I could have a little quiz and see an exit ticket. Do you, what did you get, get from this? Did you hear me say these things? But I, I can incorporate that moving forward if you'd like, but I do tell them.
Yeah, and it's not, this is not accusational towards anything that we do, but it was just, I knew that they're, like, you know, putting a little bit of two and two together, there's, there's opportunities there. And we can do that without, even though we have a very small group of, of businesses that do this kind of work. Um, it is what it is, you know, and like, I, I was, I think that they're, I'm just thinking, I, I'm thinking about this more than not the, uh, we didn't do something right to, we can't do anything about the schools that have the pockets, pocketbook already. What we can do is we can ensure that if there's any two-way, uh, any opportunity to mitigate any misunderstanding of like, I need to sit down and, and work on my, um, uh, my budget by myself, and I have never seen this before, even if I have been a principal and I haven't done that because I work in a district that's, I'm just making something up. Uh, like, that's, that's something that we can, like, help promote, promote. I don't mean, like, an individual group, but we can promote the idea of, like, have you thought about? You know, so anyhow, that's, that's something else that I think, think through that just, you know, it would be helpful. But at the same time, to, I think, I can't remember who said this, maybe it was you, Missy. I do think we want to make sure that our, I, I, granted, I know that the founding team, um, may not have a lot of information or may not have a lot of knowledge base around developing a budget or understanding how schools are funded, but boy, I want to hear them talk about that during the capacity interview. I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear one of the, 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 the business people do all the talking. And I think we do, I think we do well on that and sniffing that out. Um, and I don't want to hear the attorney talk about all the policies and procedures we have set up or whatever other things that they're going to mitigate. So I think there is some balance in that because we do want to make sure that when it comes to show, the government and council is going to be responsible for the budget, right? They understand that. The, the principal is going to be responsible for implementing the budget and they understand how to do that. Um, but we also know that there's opportunities to have people, other people involved who have those technical skills.
Tim and then Rena.
Well, just real quick, I, I think, um, it becomes apparent when, when we, as the, uh, authorizers read those, um, uh, applications and go through the community input hearings, uh, we really, uh, I think, find out pretty broadly, uh, which horses didn't drink. Um, uh, so I think we, we sit through that pretty, pretty well. Or at least this, you know, from my experience.
Alright, so I took the liberty of crossing out that they're bringing expertise beyond the applicant team. As we're, if we're, if we are using that term, and it sounds like there's consensus among commissioners that you like the term, that you like that we're asking the schools to think ahead about being part of a team and including, you know, if you know who the head administrator is going to be or someone on the board and to let us know how those people were involved in the writing of the application. But this is your community input hearing, so if there's some language here that was crossed out that says something to the effect of bringing technical expertise personnel to your community input hearing, we can change that. Your hearing is your hearing. I, I appreciate you incorporating the component that creates that term and asks the school to identify those people. And I think that as part of the training, when they see that that is now one of the few appendices that are in the application kit, that they will then start to think of it beyond, you know, me and my bestie are submitting the application. I need to be thinking ahead about who my team is. Right, so, so you can let me know what you think because it says the applicant team may have the personnel with technical expertise at the hearing. I don't know why it's so.
Why, why was this removed? Because let's say they've got somebody.
Because I was thinking in terms of only relying on what the applicant team suggested. So there's a couple of conversations, right? Like, bring whoever you want, that's okay. And then think about what Commissioner Brower just said is, okay, I have a four-hire person and they're the ones that have any knowledge about, I mean, maybe they'll help me develop my application, but then I don't, like, have anything to do with the budget. I'm not thinking at all about the budget. I don't know. I just, like, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Well, that's, I, I'm thinking, like, maybe somebody, um, special ed is an example I'm thinking of. Maybe this person's not part of the applicant team, but certainly the team needs to have them present, um, in each of those hearings. If they need to be, if we want to call on them for any reason.
What have they?
If you're more specific about something, if there's.
What have they done? Have they helped write the application? Are they just there to answer the questions so the question?
Somebody's going to be hired that can add more clarity to. You know, I'm not, I, you know, I don't, I don't care if they're there or not, quite frankly. I, I want a good applicant team that can answer all the questions like it says. They need to be able to articulate any part of, of the plan. All of them do. But if they want to have somebody present, I don't, we should knock them for that. And if this person presented, special ed, so, so, can speak directly to, uh, concerning, there used to be board members here that very specifically kind of nailed, focused in on special ed in different areas. And that way, there's a person there.
But we're judging the capacity of the team to be able to understand the decisions they have to make about special ed, not someone who's sitting in the audience saying, oh, they can talk about special ed free because we don't know anything about it.
You're discounting the value of, I'm not saying just some schmo in the audience. I'm saying someone who's.
Special ed person.
I'm saying.
If they're not part of that team, how can they answer about the application?
Maybe this is the unknown person who, because they don't want to tell their district that they're leaving, maybe this, maybe this is that person who knows they're going to be joining a school that's being called on to answer his questions.
Well, now they're, now they're known.
They don't have a role.
Now they're publicly known.
Forward. We just, I think you guys want to know. I want to know, right? Like, maybe they don't have a future role with the school. They just helped write the application. Or maybe they have a future role with the school and we're wondering what it is. I just think that this, like, makes it a little bit more explicit. So by, by naming it, by asking the applicants to think about it ahead of time and to tell us the information that they know and they're planning or what happened during the application development process. That's, that's what this is. Whether you want to limit, um, who shows up at the community input hearing to the applicant team, or if you want them to bring any technical experts to it as well, that's your decision. I.
Yeah.
Okay, but we never did.
If they can name how this individual participated in the application creation.
Mm-hmm.
They can identify that, then fine, let them speak. I don't want someone who's saying, oh, we've brought an expert in now that wasn't any part of this. Now they're going to speak to this. No.
That's exactly how.
But if they can identify to us, this is so-and-so and they, you know, they helped, you know.
Right. And that's what this does right here. This asks.
But not just.
Them who.
When I found an expert and we brought him in today for this.
Or we found them last week and so, oh, let's. So this, this asks, who is the person? Uh, y- you guys can cut out current employment if you don't like that.
I need to know where they're employed now.
I mean, it's up to you. Um, but it says, you know, like, what is their expertise or skills and their role in the development or their proposed role moving forward with the school, their proposed position.
Did you want to say something? I think I've.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to add a couple of things. I don't, I, I see the notice of intent as a very small thing that someone's like, oh, I have this idea. Maybe I'm going to submit an application in June. I know that there's a lot I have to do, but I do not see in the statute anything that ties that initial person into, um, having to have a full-blown application six months before the application's due. But I don't really see that you're talking about this, that here. So I wouldn't want anything added, like, on the NOI that you have to identify your team and you know who your lawyer is and you have to know.
I agree.
Because one of the things I think is pretty remarkable about our law is anyone can apply to have a charter school. Anybody for any reason.
The notice of intent is a placeholder and it notifies us who needs training. So, but they can be prepared.
What it really does is notify the districts who might apply. That's the main point of it. So.
Not that they act on that, but, um, we do.
That's the only second point. That's, yeah, so I, I don't want there to be more added to that because it's six months in advance. The, the next thing, and I think you're really grappling with that tension, you only have a couple of ways that you can deny a new school application. And, and if they don't list all their team members or whatever, I mean, I think, I want to go back to what, um, Commissioner Beck was saying, which is what is the capacity of that group to answer these questions? I, I am, um, I want to also keep the lines. You don't have a, a board yet. They are the ones who are going to hire the head administrator and the head administrator is going to hire the employees. So I am concerned to say, this is our special ed person. Because you don't have a head of school yet. And what if that special ed person doesn't do it? Later, you're going to say, you said it was Joe Blow and now it's whoever.
Well, that's why it's proposed because, um, and, and, and it's you. Who serves what roles with the school is, is slightly different at the very beginning of a charter school's life than it is later on. Absolutely. Later on, there's a process, there's something in law that says the governing board needs to hire the head administrator and maybe that process is implemented anyway. But I, some of our applicants are, um, proposing that someone's a head administrator and maybe they would go through the process of applying anyway. But I think for us to know in advance what the applicant team is thinking and proposing is better than not knowing.
Council.
No.
My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it is the governance council of that new school during their implementation year that has to hire. It's not the team ahead of time. So that, I agree. I think the plan has to be there. I think anyone can talk about hopes and aspirations about who might apply. But you can't say this person's going to be our head administrator because you're not the governance.
Or even, I'm going to be the GC, board president.
Yeah.
Though, I, I, I see the point of the team and I see the point of saying to them, there should be a consistent presence that you all are presenting this, this capacity from the beginning. But I, we spend so much time, and I know that Missy then later trains them forever to keep those lines clear. And when we've merged the lines from the beginning, that just, uh, it's.
This is the only time where there's a little bit, because they aren't yet formed as a board, which absolutely, when they're a board, that's in their bylaws, that's in, that's what they do. But at this stage in the game, and, and I've heard both arguments, like, oh, it's, it's, it's best practice to know who the head administrator is. Let them have input into the development of the charter. Or, wait, we don't want to identify who the head administrator is from the get-go um, because then maybe that's just somebody that's trying to create a new job for themselves. Um, but wait, um, it's going to be hard to find a, and I've seen successful schools on both sides where the founders were the head administrators or they knew who might be the head administrator. And I've seen successful schools where they had no idea who the head administrator was and they hired it. So I think it could go either way. And this is not locking them into a situation or discounting a process that is required in law or by their bylaws. It is just saying, who are you proposing? What are you thinking? Let us know what is a possibility.
Um, I 100% disagree that the head administrator needs to be named prior to. There's two, there are too many complications. One is, like you just said, the board hires a head, head administrator. So you're, you're creating a bias from the very beginning for this person to have an unfair advantage over anybody else. Alright? You, you may end up having that person. The other, the other, the other thing is, is that, as we've already, as we've already talked about, um, a newly head administrator who's currently employed puts their job at risk immediately. So, I mean, there's just, I mean, we might get somebody that's unemployed, right? That, um, that ends up being the head administrator. So there, there's no, there's no effect, obviously, on that. But I, 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 I don't think that you can ask it. I don't think you can ask that.
I 100% agree that the best, excuse me, the best practice would be to have the new head administrator part of the implementation year. But now you're talking about a governance council formed. They've made that decision. And I 100% also see that if you don't have a CSP grant money, you're not going to be able to do that. So it does create, now I'm three-quarters of the way up the stairs against an applicant that doesn't get it. We have no control over that. But it is really, I've seen it. It's critical that that head administrator be part of the implementation team because they're the one that, that's going to have to implement everything that's been talked about this whole year. But I wa- I want to make sure that the governance council is the ones making that decision. And I don't want it to look like there's an inside deal because I think some people would say, oh, they're creating that school to secure themselves a job. And that could very well be. But I think it has to be publicly voted on by a governance council who they're hiring. That we have to assure and not make some, like, we're subverting OMA.
Oh, yeah, like, this, this, this doesn't guarantee that you don't go through the process, right? Um, just because you're naming who is potentially your proposed.
I think it does. I think it does. I think it puts a veil of creepiness. I do.
Becca's hand is up.
Becca?
Yeah, I guess I was, I was trying to, like, count up in my head real quick how many this has happened to. But I'm, I think I'm feeling, um, a little confused. We haven't ever had an issue before. We have approved, in just my time, most of the schools we have approved have been led by the proposed head administrator with a governing board supporting them. That's, that's actually more common than a governing board being the applicant and not having a, a proposed head administrator and saying, oh, yeah, we're going to try to, we'll find one later, right? And we have a plan, we're going to hire him later. Like, so I am a little confused by the conversation of how. Like, so I am a little confused by the conversation of how it's, how it's weird or wrong. Because, and, and I, what my request is, why I raise my hand is because I'm wondering if there are some national best practices or some data to support. Because, once again, like I said, I, I've, I've had conversations with several people about how it actually is, it is better for a school, I mean, if you just, I mean, I'm going to be very logical. If a school during their application process, I'm not even talking about implementation year. Implementation year is, would be insane without a head administrator. And once again, like Patty said, I don't know how you hire one without money then either. Um, like, but when, when new charters are starting, for someone to not be part of the application creation and process, they are not going to have the same foot in the sand, stake in the game as someone who is a part of it and leading it from day one of the idea being formulated and, and developed as someone who gets hired into the process and then has to fall into this idea and fall into the process. I'm just, I'm not saying it's a requirement, but I'm wondering if we can find, if we can, I don't know if we even have time to do it for this year, but I would like to be able to do some research and see if there's some data to support and some national best practices to support that it's recommended or that it's best practice or that during trainings it's said, like, hey, it's really important to actually be able to name a proposed head administrator because we see more success. And this is, once again, where I would love to have the data in front of me right now to support this. But when you have a, a head administrator who's a part of the actual application, I, I mean, just logically, it's going to be more likely that that school's going to be more successful because you're going to have consistent leadership. They're going to be bought in in a different way than someone who gets brought in. And so I'm, I don't think it should be a requirement, but I'm, I'm wondering if it can be just stated as a best practice or as a, um, I mean, if someone's not willing to put their name out there because of a job, I don't, I, I, that, that hasn't been, the, the great leaders that we have started schools with in my time have not had, have not, have not worried about that. And we've even had folks this year who have not, they have put their names out there while they're employed, knowing that it's a risky business. Um, I just don't know. It's, it's a little, I, I, I'm.
Commissioner.
I don't like the idea of not naming them. I want, I want to support naming them and making schools think about it and trying to bring them on as early as possible instead of waiting until afterwards.
Commissioner Burt, thank you for your comments. And I, I can tell you that when I was thinking about the edits to the new school application, I went to the NACSA website. I think we can all agree that NACSA is the national experts in regards to charter applications. And I don't know, in terms of authorizing practices, I should say. And they have a series of tools out right now. Their latest thinking, remember, they revised the new application kit. They have a couple of other reports where they're talking about aspects of their, their current thinking, which is based on, you know, research around high-quality charter schools. And they're thinking of the importance of the capacity of the founding team, right? And so when we define capacity, I think we are talking about people that bring relevant skills and maybe are ready to jump into that position should the board go through a formal process and hire them or are ready to sit on the board itself. So my thinking did take into consideration what NACSA is suggesting about the new application process and really paying attention to the capacity of the founders. And it was also a practice that the state of New York uses in their application kit.
Thank you for that, Karina. And that, yeah, I mean, I, I, I really feel like I, I, it, it's been apparent when, I mean, there's someone leading day to day and then there's someone who comes in once a month. I mean, there's, there's a big difference between a board member filling out an application versus a head administrator. I mean, their roles and, and when I think of capacity, that day-to-day operation and fulfilling a mission day-to-day is so massive. It's so pivotal. So I just want to encourage that, that, I, I would like to encourage that we go down that route. And because I do, I, I do have a bias towards it. I, I 100% do. That if a school has a proposed, I mean, they're all proposed and they all have to follow how they're, what they're supposed to do. But it's a big difference when it's a board who's going to go find someone creating the program because part of their belief is this.
You've broken up there.
We lost. Okay, Becca, you're breaking up and we didn't hear probably the last minute, minute and a half.
Sorry, everyone.
Yeah, you're gone again. Yeah.
Go, just go past me. I'm done.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so just real, real briefly, okay? As, as we've seen, every, every applicant that comes in, virtually every one of them has a proposed head administrator in the, in the group, right? My, my only thing is that I don't think it needs to be asked on the application and identified in that, in that area. I just feel like they, they know, they kind of feel like who's going to be the head administrator. I don't think, speaking to capacity, that person has the skill set and the experience and the, and the know-how, whether or not they're identified as the potential head administrator or not. So I just don't, I just don't like the question on the application. I agree with Mike. Essentially, the founders are usually, usually it's the main founder is going to be a board, a board president or the head admin. Usually the way it kind of runs out, seems like, right?
Okay. Can we move on?
The agreement is?
I think, I, I think the agreement is that, I think the consensus.
You want some time to think about it?
Identify the team and who that team is and whatever roles they're going to serve in the future doesn't have to be identified at that moment.
Thanks, Julia. Where, oh, so cross all this out. Yeah, I, this is kind of useless-ish, but whatever.
Well, I don't think, so.
And I, and I didn't hear consensus, actually, so.
If they don't have consensus there, I'm going to try to interrupt you.
Think about it.
I agree with Patty. I don't think we need to cross everything. No, it's a great idea. Question who the applicant team members are and what role they played. I mean, leave it at that. They don't have to tell us anything in the future.
Maybe we can talk about it.
In the application process.
Yeah.
You know, you did the admin, you know, I'm going to be the input on the administrative team. So, so I think we need to go back.
To.
Because you had a section there on plagiarism. I don't think we covered.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be a lovely discussion. Okay. So the first time that plagiarism comes up is that I think that there are some applications that the, the charter schools division could use to run applications through a test for plagiarism. I believe that there are artificial intelligence-like applications, maybe even, oh, what is it? Chat, GTP.
I've heard about a bunch of these.
Okay.
There's a few level of stuff that was.
Hand is up. Yay. And just, excuse me, Chair Gibson, I sent you a text and I just want the rest of the commissioners to know that I have to leave at four.
What did you want?
You heard me.
Who do you want to leave at four?
All right. So do you want KT to talk about? His hand is up.
Sure. I was just thinking, I think we need to, a definition, def.
Definition?
Definition of plagiarism?
Of what plagiarism is.
Oh, I added a definition of plagiarism into the glossary as well that you can tear apart.
What's moving around? Right, it keeps moving around.
Okay, KT?
I, I'd had several discussions with Commissioner Creo about plagiarism because I'm well aware of plagiarism that can be done in the academic setting, having to review a ton of papers on a semester-by-semester basis. And oftentimes, well, I guess I should say, over the past five or six years, the primary program that we've used has been Turnitin. Now, there are other programs that, that are used primarily by academics for their own research papers that they can use to test themselves. I can't recall the name of the, the program. But oftentimes, whenever we, from a student basis, if we're using it in that frame, I, I usually think of like a threshold as to like a percentage, right, of what's acceptable to have like sources in the document. And so to say that there's not necessarily going to be any, anything in a document, I think that that's pretty dogmatic because you're only going to, it's either you have no plagiarism and if you have any small amount of plagiarism, then you're automatically disqualified. I don't think that, you know, it's, it's really difficult, I think, plagiarism today because, like I said, Turnitin can identify sentences, can identify things like that. There's other programs that can identify things that are used in the academic setting and it'll, it'll go based off of all the documents either in their repository. So like, for example, at NMSU, it assesses the paper based off of anything that's ever been submitted by an NMSU student as well as anything on the internet. And that, I mean, that's a, a lot of, a lot of bases to cover, right? So the Turnitin software, I've found it to be very helpful. Now, do I always look at it? No, but it, it, I have all my reports run through there. So if I see like a red flag, it'll give me a, you know, a ding that I'm saying, saying, okay, well, this has like 25% or more is from sources online or from previous works. And so that's where it kind of generates some red flags for me. But I think that's where we're going to have to have some type of software. It's too difficult for a, for an individual to be able to, to do this. And whether it be using Turnitin or using, I'll have to find the, the other program that, that I've used before for my research papers. They're pretty good. I mean, they're pretty good at being able to identify those things. And it'll highlight the exact sentence, the exact paragraph, give you the exact reference of where that source is copied from. So I, I think the system is good. I just think we have to decide on what a threshold is. Are we going to accept, you know, 5% or less is going to be okay, 10% or less, 0%, right? We have to think about what that actually looks like if there's going to be, right? If we don't want them to get any, any information from anywhere, any previous application, anything at all, then we're just going to have to be able to identify what that looks like. So I, I think it'll be challenging, honestly.
Thanks. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I'd be, we did Turnitin for research papers and I say the same thing. That was real.
I agree. I think there has to be a threshold because my concern when I saw this was there is such a quick turnaround. How, how can anyone possibly, you know, be able to do this? And that's where I have a concern about automatically disqualifying. Because it's like, how, do we miss, are we going to be able to catch everyone? Or is there something that we could run it through where we can say, okay, 25% of this was taken from someone or something else? So that's an automatic disqualifier. That's equal. I guess that's fair to, to say that. But having, I mean, I didn't have to deal with AI, but I certainly had to deal with getting, you know, so much information. So for me, in the classroom, it became less about the written word and more about you supporting the work that you turned in. So, okay, if you did take this from somewhere, why did you do it? Support this? How did this help you in getting you to this? Acknowledge the fact that you copied this. You took this from someplace else, but why did you do that? How does this help you? Why, what was the decision? So, so that the presentation of learning, the person's going to be able to have to justify why that information helps support their hypotheses. If you're looking at, you know, our, our work. So that it was an easy way of exposing, once again, the fact that they don't know what they're talking about because they just took it from someplace and put it in this, in this paper. Because it doesn't help them when they're sitting there at an AP test or an SAT test and having to write the essay, you know. I think we've already addressed to some extent, you know, if a school wants to use someone, another application, we've got replication addressed in the new application. But they have to acknowledge that they're replicating this model. And then they would have to justify to us why that model works for the community that they now want to be in. But that's a full replication of a whole model. So I think maybe we'd have to look at if they took more than 50% from another application. Does that disqualify them? Or do they have to say, okay, now it's a replication and you have to answer to this? And you, and you have to, because there's specific parameters for a replication in an area. And they would have to then follow the replication parameters. I, you know, it's, it's tough. Commissioner Brower?
KT, was your hand, was your hand up again?
KT, is your hand still up?
I raised it again only because you brought up the AI part that the, the Turnitin software will also now identify generative AI within a text. However, I found that that is sometimes inconsistent. You know, usually what I tell students whenever I get a paper that I, I don't have to look at the generative AI part for me to know that it's generative AI because it's like their New York Times bestselling author. And I know that no student of mine that I've, I've had is a New York Times bestselling author. If they are, that's great. You know, I say that upfront. But I said, I, I always preface that, like, I don't have to look at that for me to know that you've, you've used AI-generated content. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it does assess it, but it's not something I've, I trust very well.
Okay, thanks.
I'm so glad we're having this conversation and I know it's going to be not, we're not going to get to any closure today, I'm assuming, unless we're going to be here for, until midnight tonight. Maybe we might get somewhere. I think that, I like the idea that we're talking about already around using the, the AI to kind of just do a test. I think about this as like, we're, we're doing a test on it. And I think we do that equitably throughout for, for each school. I think also there needs to be very clear-cut, what are the do's and don'ts during the time with Missy and any trainings that we do? We just have to, I think we have to close that so that there's no ifs, ands, or buts about what we expect in terms of borrowing, cutting, pasting, or plaguing. in terms of borrowing, cutting, pasting, or plagiarizing without citing the person that you're doing. There's a couple of other things I just think about. I think that if somebody's using, and I know like, it's interesting, I I feel like as a child in the in college, there's like, you can get kicked out of school for plagiarizing, right? You can, that's just the reality.
It'll take several times now, but yes.
But as a school that's gonna receive several hundred thousand dollars of money from our state, there's a potential that you can plagiarize. And so like, I've been grappling with that, like, why that's the case. And there's something, there's something in there that I've been, I don't have a an answer on where I'm at, but it just doesn't feel that feels odd to me, that something that doesn't really matter, like my my practicum at, you know, at UNM Anderson, I could have gotten kicked out if I copied and pasted somebody else's and said it was mine, but here's five hundred thousand dollars and you can open up a new school. So I think that there's something that we have to grapple with with our values on that. The only thing I just think about is and this comes from experience, quite frankly, when I work in for NACA inspired schools, we had, you all know many of the schools that we worked with, Dream the Mess, Six Directions, RISAS. NACA is not one of ours, but it's a friendly school. Like, when I worked for them, we worked super hard not to take Dream the Mess application and whatever, whatever part and copy and paste it. Like, it was just like a map that was like an on-own system, even though we helped create it. It was just something there that just didn't feel right, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't doing that. Again, this is value is not like legality or definitely defining what plagiarism is or is not. So I do think that we need to make sure that schools, if we do decide that it's okay to borrow and cut and paste from other school applications, that there is some level of expressed written consent or something of that nature that happens. Because I think that would be, that would be an issue that I would feel if I was one of our other fifty-some schools. If somebody is just able to like use that willingly, that seems, you know, wait a second, I did that all by myself. And now you're gonna take this and take a shortcut.
Gonna create some bad precedent.
It does, it does. And I think that for me, I think the beauty of of charter schools in New Mexico, we are fairly unique. That we're, and you know, when we go to Maxa, we're more of a mom and pop shop kind of place. We're not a here are a multitude of like the same schools that have the same management organization behind them. Like, this is not, that's not who we are. And so we do like shift that a little bit. If we start to allow like some of the important stuff to be just kind of like borrowed from from other folks word for word. I think there is something very important for each of our, we just spent an hour talking about the founding teams and how important they are. And I just think about, I want them to think about every last part, every question we have in that application. Like, that's important for them to kind of grapple. And not every word, I I get that, like, it's hundreds of pages long. But I want them to like grapple with, like, what is their special education process for identifying students? I want them to like, think about that and talk that through and learn from other schools. But at the end of the day, it is co-created, not with another school, helping them out and borrowing from them, but we're co-creating by using those as resources and making it something of our own, just like we do all of our written work. That's just, that's just a fact of what we do. I see the other part, I see that other applications are primary sources and not not something that we we ought to just let be button paste, paste it into another person's application. I I really struggle with that part. And I think the idea of a school team grappling with that, not just during, not just in front of us, but but like in in their back, you know, behind closed doors with their, with their, with their with their their team and with their community that they're supposed to be working with. I think those are important things that we need to kind of hold as as key truths and things that we need to honor. And then the last thing I just wanted to say, I I think that I think if we start thinking about a percentage of threshold, Chair and Commissioner Manis, I think if that, I think we needed to also define, like, is that like a specific question? Is it fifty percent? I mean, twenty-five percent of an entire two-hundred-and-five-page document is like, that's a lot, that's a threshold is really big, you know, and so I think we need to kind of think through defining that just a little bit more in terms of what what makes sense for us. And along that line, I think we need to, I think we need to have some conversation around what we feel is up for cutting and pasting and borrowing. And what is this not? Because I think we had some some enriching conversations around everyone, all of us, all ten of us have a different opinion about like what we think needs to be held to a certain bar, and then what is okay to borrow or plagiarize. And so I think that, I think, I think we have to, I think we have to kind of do some norming around that of like, what are those things? So one one idea that I have, I think about, you know, the thing that we've talked about with charter school PSN, I always want to say the coalition still, PSNM, PSPCM, you know what I'm talking about. He just left, so I'm glad I can just butcher it now. Oh, I don't even say, okay. I think that I mean, years ago, we were talking about, wouldn't it be great during the implementation year to have a clearinghouse of policies and procedures that schools could borrow from each other? I think that is a beautiful thing. I think those are things that like, I feel like good about, like, we can make some boilerplate kind of things. Knowing that also, like the McKinley Vento Unsheltered Broke Policy, that is absolutely not able to be used from other schools. That's something that's or the safety plan is not able to be used from other schools for obvious reasons. So I think we need to like kind of think through what is okay? Because we don't want this to be difficult or burdensome. But also, what what is this like not okay for for a school to just borrow? And for me, I'm like a little bit more on the on the end of like, if it's in the application, I want to see original thought, I want to see original ideas. I want to see citations if you're taking something from somebody else. I think that's reasonable. But I don't want to see word for word without any citation. But anyhow, those are some of the big things that I've figured out after a month from the last time we had, I know I had impassioned conversations with many of you afterwards. I've been thinking about it. I love everyone and I appreciate everyone's vote. But I also think that as we move forward, like, I'd love for us to really kind of grapple with some of these things that we're not gonna figure out tonight. But these are some things that I'm thinking about.
Chair Gibson, thank you, Commissioner Brower. Commissioners, along that line of thinking, a couple of the other significant edits that I am proposing was to remove a couple of the appendices that maybe could be considered a little bit more boilerplate that I know schools often borrow from each other. Either their bylaws, which are required in the implementation year anyway, and the internal control procedures, which that level of detail maybe isn't necessary, especially because we ask questions anyway in that section. And I went through that section that talks about that just to make sure that it was thorough enough and instead added the applicant team form that you all are gonna think about. And then I think probably the most significant part of the suggested changes that I made have to do with the community outreach information in that section, which includes three. And I don't know if there's time in the next half hour to go there, if you all were done, but I just wanted to give you that sort of high level. That was some of the thinking.
I think we have to think about.
I even wonder if you like, Corina has just presented kind of a thoughtful thing, not to have the things that are often boilerplate or often, like, I think it's a good idea to look at somebody else's bylaws. Maybe you like the way they follow that, but to push that off until later. But maybe the document on is a separate PEC document or something with what your what your thinking is, because it is, I think, more nuanced. Like Commissioner Brower was just saying, what do you, what do you mean? And to have have it just in the application itself, if it was such an important topic to you, that maybe you do it as a separate thing that comes from you.
Oh, sorry, KT.
Yeah, I think, you know, NMSU, they they have like an addenda page for where all the the boilerplate stuff for NMSU syllabi is held, a website to where every year, you know, they go through and they have to update that. So if the PEC, if we had something where it's boilerplate, where if anything changes on a annual basis related to some of these things, I think it'd be helpful to have a website page that has all that information. That way, they don't have to include it in their application and they just, you know, say, refer to this website for these policies and procedures, et cetera, et cetera. It really is helpful, although I do think it is on us that we make sure that schools understand those policies and procedures as well, because sometimes having that boilerplate to where they're not having to actually go and physically pull that and look at it. It may never get read. I know there's probably several policies that I've never seen or paid attention to just because I don't necessarily feel like I need to know it right offhand. I can always refer back to it, you know what I mean? So I wanted to mention that, but I I completely agree with Commissioner Brower's comments about section by section. I think some sections for me, like if I'm going through here, their, I I would hope their mission-specific goal isn't exactly what somebody else's is, or their mission was, you know, there's twenty-five or fifty percent of somebody else's mission or even their curriculum. You know what I mean? Some of these, we probably have to go section by section of the application. And I don't necessarily think it it would be that difficult if we're using that that software to be able to pinpoint some of these things, but we're gonna have to figure out what threshold is acceptable, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I I think there's certain things that it's the same no matter what school it is. You know, if you got a plan for getting new governance council members, you got a plan for getting new governance council members, and it's not gonna change a whole lot from school to school. It's not. So, okay, but then, yes, when you're looking at mission goal, when you're looking at your ed program, when you're looking at how are you going to serve the kids in your community? And you're just pulling it from someplace else, it's like, so how is that, you know, how how is that serving that community? That's, so I think you're right. I think we need to, if we're looking at that threshold, it's gonna have to go section by section. And there's some sections, we're not even gonna probably look at that closely. Because, or we're, we're gonna say, here it is. Take from this menu. Because, you know, these these plans are acceptable, fine, but you have to be able to support why you're doing this and how you're doing it. Okay.
May I ask a question of Commissioner Manis? I I was not, I had to walk out when you were talking, but one of the the things I wonder, and and we will mine your knowledge of how these how these applications work for being able to test for plagiarism, is it is it that it compares a body of writing with what's on the internet? Or is it way beyond my imagination?
We can, so one thing is, like, if we use Turnitin, for example, we could upload all of the prior applications into Turnitin. Obviously, those are already on on the internet. But just to be clear and safe that these are the prior documents, then it will, it will identify that those were documents that have already been submitted. They're in our repository. It also identifies whether it's on the internet as well. So if they pulled, say, from some random source, maybe Charter School Institute, it's going to give the exact hyperlink of that webpage that they pulled it from. So it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It just depends on how much time you want to spend drilling down into it, but obviously, that's what we're, that's the purpose of this, is to see where they're pulling this information from. But yeah, we can definitely upload all the previous applications as a repository, and it will be able to identify from which application the information was was pulled from.
Thank you. I'm one, I'm wondering if there's a group of people that wanna kind of provide input on a section by sec, on section by section thought and bring back something for people to look at. I mean, because it sounds like you want, if they elect from another school or utilize something from another school, that there's a citation and potentially reaching out to those people to see that that can be used. So what is the nuance there? There are certain sections that you very much want their original thought and to identify that for them, and then to identify for them that you will be running it through some kind of a plagiarism software, but I don't know if if you want to have a group of people that give input on that. I mean, it feels like so many commissioners had so much thought around this that it does feel like something for you guys to bring back.
And Becca?
I think that's a good idea. I'd volunteer for that. I do think the I I like the idea of going section by section, because I do think, like, the threshold for ed program, zero percent, right? But like, when you get to, you know, identifying whatever, like, then it's it's pretty similar school to school. But also, I wanted to like come back to what, like Patty and I've talked about this since she mentioned it earlier. And I don't see it anywhere in here, and I definitely think it should be highlighted that when schools do, so I don't think they need to get permission from the other schools either. It's a public document. I I mean, if they if they go through and they do their due diligence and they're looking through old applications and they see something they like, I don't think they have to reach out to another school to to do that. But I do think it has to be like, right now, that right in the definition of plagiarism, which I don't think, I think that second part isn't part of the definition. I think there needs to be more instruction about it in another section outside the glossary of what the expectation is. That if you do need a credit and and cite sources, but it needs to be directly on that. It can't be just at the bottom where it says that they use this school's application. Like, if you, if they do use something directly from another application, it needs to be up there. But then in addition, and this is what I wanted to come back to what Patty said, is right there where it says that this, you know, this is where they, this is the information quoted. This is where they got it from and why. Like, why are they using that? Why is that the best practice? How do they know it's the best practice? Why would it work for their school? I think that, like, being able to articulate the understanding of why they're using it as a best practice or why that exact process would work for their school is what would be the biggest difference. It's on the bottom of page eight, Corina. So the first, the first part of it is a, is the definition, but then the second sentence is like an instruction more. And I think there needs, like, that, I think, being specific with, like, every, when when you use a quote from another, from anywhere. I mean, that's, I mean, that's anywhere. That's if they use a quote from the, I I'm also thinking, you know, some people might use like information from a curriculum that they're that they're intending on using, and they get the information from that curriculum source and put it in there of like, this is why we're using it, and it's straight from the curriculum provider. I'm waiting for it to get down there.
I can't tell which is page eight. Can you just tell me what the header is or what?
It's a glossary. It's the very last line. It starts with instructional hours. The page starts with instructional hours. Yeah, you're almost there. A little bit more. You're so close. Right after partnership. Yep, right there. Next one. Right after partnership. Yep, right there. Next one.
Right, right, that was the proposed definition, but there was, there was another place in the application where it talks about, I think it's the rubric, actually. I think that those, the PEC also needs to, oh, I added the withdraw of the applications as a definition, but here's the other place that I do think, and I highlighted anything in yellow that I thought you all might want to discuss. But here's the other place in the application where I don't, I didn't change any of the language, it was already there. And then, sort of in response to that question of going section by section, the other more perhaps efficient way of gauging your thoughts on what should be checked for is we could do a survey to commissioners and then see what the results say, and then you'll spend time talking about it next time, anyway.
That's a really good idea. So I, what I would say, this is actually where there's a loophole, is putting it in here. I think this needs to be not in here, well, I mean, you could leave it in here too, if that's what you want, but it needs to be somewhere else as well, because just having it does not meet the criteria for that section does not necessarily mean that the application should not continue. Um, it just means they did not meet that section. So I feel like it needs to be more specific somewhere else outside of the rubric as well. Like, this is okay, but somewhere else, like, I think it just needs to be clear of, like, yeah, I mean, copying responses from a prior application without citing the reason why and, and the, and the reference to that location per, for each section, or for each, for each quote. Um, I mean, copying statutory guidance, like, I don't, I don't know why that's a, I'm, I'm, I don't know why that would be a problem. That seems like it's good.
It's because sometimes applicants would, instead of answering the question about what they were gonna do, they would just, like, copy and paste what was in statute.
It has to be explained, copying statutory regulatory policy without responding to the prompt, because that, that is why it's there, because a response for, how are you gonna serve special ed students? Shouldn't just be copying the statute on special ed identification, that, you know.
Right.
So, so I guess that, this is a good thing. I think there needs to be more specificity, and it also needs to be outside of the rubric alone. Like, this level of specificity needs to be somewhere else as well.
Okay, so, I don't know.
And I think it's where, where you had, um, maybe it should be where it's like, um, the way, the reasons why it would be disqualified. Like, right now, I think it just has it, like, very short. When you put, when you add it, like, because you have, yeah, or sorry, yeah.
No. It's where, it's in the technical.
Yes, you're, you're, you're in the right direction. Here, here we go. So, so in number four, I think that could be useful to actually be specific there. And, and to be like plagiarism, it, like, this is what we're looking for. Like, this is where it will be, it will be ran through a plagiarism detector. Every, in each individual citation needs to have correct citing on each quote, and an explanation of why that quote is being used. Like, I think this is where we can be, like, kind of close the loopholes, is, is right here.
Honestly, though, I think that we might be making it very restrictive compared to what is standard for, if you're just quoting somebody and you cite it, they're, like, rarely, I have to give a definite, like, a, a reasoning. I'm using it in the, in a specific context, you know, I, I, I have to use quotes a lot for, for my research. I don't ever give a reason why I'm using that quote in particular. But I use the quote because it makes sense for relative to the other things that are being discussed in that paragraph paper, what, what have you. And so that's where I, I wanna caution that having to make it overly burdensome to explain quotations.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it might even be better that we're stating here that the applicant, before submitting their application, they should run their own work through a plagiarism checker, like, the one that I put in the, the chat was duplachecker.com, that I, I put in a paragraph from one of the applications just within the last few minutes, and it popped up the application on our website. So it, it mean, it's, it's pulling from, from what's already on the internet, and they could use the same, it's free, right? They should be, it should be on the applicant to first be checking for plagiarism themselves, right? And then we're doing that check afterwards, but really, they should be the ones who are ensuring that their application does not have pla, plagiarism, right? And there's plenty of free programs that they could do that. I just, that, that's where, to me, if, one, I know that, that students, right, they can look at the Turnitin report before they, before they give a final submission. I think we should also give applicants at least some guidance on how they should go about checking for plagiarism before they submit, especially because maybe they might not necessarily be aware that they're, that it's like this most recent applicant team did not take ownership that, that they wrote that, or they copy and paste it, it was somebody that they contracted out. Well, all applicants should run it through a plagiarism software check, whether it be a free one or a paid one, I don't care, but I think it, some, some of the onus should be placed on the, the applicant.
I think so too. I think when, when, um, I, I don't have any qualms with them not having to explain it, because usually, I would say those areas where they're gonna be, like, basically taking a procedure or policy, or however another school's doing it, and they're like, that's what we wanna do in our school as well, is pretty self-explanatory, but I'm open, because I hear other commissioners talking about that there, there's some other moral aspects to it that they're feeling uncomfortable with. So that's why I think, like, having a school explain why they're taking that information from another school and, and putting it in their own, why it makes sense might help with some of the moral dilemmas that people are talking about, that they might have more issues with. But I'm, I'm like you, I'm, I'm, I would be okay if they, if they put a quote around it, and they put where they got it from, and it makes sense, I feel, I feel fine with it. But I would definitely support if other commissioners were, are feeling strongly that they, that that would help with that gray area.
To me, it just makes it overly burdensome. But I, but I, I hear your point.
Okay, I, I think at this point in time, we'll ask for commissioners, we'll send something out asking for commissioners that might be willing to take a look at the application and look at those sections and create those guardrails for the percentages in those sections that we feel are the more compelling pieces that a school needs to be more specific and personal to the, to the application community.
Chair Gibson, I had suggested a survey, and we're happy to send that out to commissioners, so you'll have, you know, the collective sense, ready for your next meeting. And I'm, I'm wrapping things up here, okay. Do, do we wanna stay on this?
Sure. Well, you wanna go to the community?
Yeah, that's, that's, that section, which is the very last section in the application, Bridget just likes to scroll all the way down, is the area that, well, that, no, the community input section of the application, not the input hearing. And it's the very last part of the application. Just so you know, again, anything that's highlighted yellow, I thought you might want to discuss. And you should be very proud of me for my lovely track changes, but it's gonna make it hard to read, because I reworked a couple of the last sections. Okay, I think you're there, yeah, just go up. So, for example, A is outreach program, and so I, I reworded this, I added the appendix where we would get really concrete information about what particular activities the applicant team engaged in, who was there? What did it yield, that sort of a thing, what actions were taken? What feedback did they get on the application to demonstrate that, you know, they've been engaging a broad audience? And indicate the number of attendees at each one. There's a, there's a particular table they would fill out as, but here, they would provide a narrative. And then the community supports piece, if you can scroll down just a little bit, added and demand. And this, again, I, I looked at some of the best practices that NACSA talked about in terms of demand by rewording some of this, so that we're not just looking to see, like, are they popular with their professional colleagues in the community, but are families who might attend this school actually asking for the school? And what are the qualitative and quantitative message, measures that suggest that, right? So a qualitative measure might be, there's no school that offers an arts program in the community. And then the quantitative might be, the neighborhood that we wanna open up the school is all schools in need of improvement, and all those schools of choice, charter schools in this neighborhood have a long waitlist. So it gets a little bit, and it introduces a term that this commission maybe has heard, but not has used as much, and that is demand. Because I think that there is, yeah. I think that, why are we opening up charter schools, right? Like, because we like the idea, because our bestie is, is proposing it, because there's no charter schools within a 200-mile radius? Or because families need, want, and such a school. So that's what that sort of tries to get at a little bit more. And then, if you wanna go, and, and it talks about it being specific to the community. And, you know, so it's looking at geographical information, grade levels, targeted student population. A lot of that language was there before. The community relations section is exactly the same, but if you want to scroll down to the appendix, that would be collected as part of one of these is the community outreach. And you guys can talk about it while I'm not here. I'm really sorry that I have to miss this discussion, because this matters a lot to me. And, anyway, but I do need to go.
Okay. Thanks. Katie?
Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring up relative to this is, if we're wanting to separate this out to be able to assess the, the plagiarism section by section, it might be helpful if we are able to split the application into parts where whenever they submit, whether it be like part one, academic framework, right? Part two, financial, part three, organizational. If we get that split up, then it's going to be easier to specifically assess that part, the plagiar, because I think that might help in, in rather than having to go through the whole document with, for plagiarism, whereas we could have sections, just thinking from a, assessing the document standpoint of this plagiarism, because I think it can get very tedious if it's one giant 200-page document that we're trying to look for plagiarism through and, and whatnot. So just something to keep in mind, I think, as we, as we have more discussion about this.
Okay, thanks.
The standard on the, or denying the application, which is on, on community input, is the application is otherwise contrary to the best interest of the charter school's projected students, the local community, or the school district. So the, the, the reason for looking at that interest in the community is only, frankly, because if you're gonna deny somebody under that provision, you need to be able to do that. So it's what would be contrary to the best interest of the charter school's projected students. You might work backwards from that, because if you're adding a bunch of things that they have to do and have to show, make sure that you're defining it according to make a decision on it. Because it feels like you're adding a lot of criteria to what a school has to do in order to show that interest in the community, and this is your standard. Contrary to the best interest of the charter school's projected students, the local community, other school district.
So I see that a lot of this does fit into that. So as an example, let's just say, the school district already has this great arts program. And there's no, anyone that wants to participate can get into that program. So if you have an art school that wants to open, it's contrary to the district, because the district has a well-performing, and they're not denying participation. You know, it's not limited to only 25 kids or something like that, but if it's open to all, then why would you open another art school, when you already have a successful program?
Well, that's precisely what happened with NMSA. I mean, Santa Fe argued they have, and they do, they have career arts programs at Santa Fe High School. And so the district argued that this is, you know, contrary to the Charter Act and everything else, and we don't need this, but the, the level at which NMSA is offering art and extended program throughout the day, or at the end of the day, there's no possible way the district could afford, or to do that, to implement, or that NEA would have ever even gone for it.
Well, and it was also open to everyone in the state. So it's not just contrary to Santa Fe. It would, that was open to every, so that there were so many other districts that didn't offer any kind of program like that. But, and I agree, if, if this applicant had something that was significantly different than the arts program in the district, that would separate it out. But if they're just offering
Another art class.
Another arts program, similar to what the district has, the district is functioning well, and it's not limited, so that students aren't being turned away. To me, that would be an argument that it's contrary to the district.
Looking at Rio Goffa, I mean, you can be part of a district that has, you know, an incredibly, you know, a lot of different arts enrichment programs and everything else, but they don't have a school where it's an arts embedded program. And, you know, that's, again, making a difference. That's what I argue for that. I would actually, I thought about this after Corinne said, I'm sorry, she's not here. She said the word that people don't often use here, demand. I said, fuck, man, I talk about the market determines what opens, and we need it practically. No, the market determines whether or not we open a new charter school. That is, in essence, demand. Yeah, did you hear that? I see ya. Tiff your head.
The tippy of your head.
I, I believe what Julie is referring to is pretty covered in that second dot in the, part B, community support. Says, provide a description of educational options for similar populations in the community, demonstrate why there is a need for a high-quality charter option serving that particular demographic. So I think that kind of covers that piece pretty well.
I think so. I think so. Okay. We're gonna put this to bed. Yes, we are. So we're gonna take a 10-minute break. It was. They both work. Green?
Yeah, that works. Check, check.
For ten years, and this year they've told us we cannot do that. So the school council actually approved paying for three buses on their own out of operational to transport kids that they've been transporting for years from outside of the Albuquerque geographic boundaries. Now I have issue with it because, as you know, our boundaries are really the whole state. But I'm also not unreasonable. We're not going to go pick kids up in Gallup. But we need, we really, I'm asking the P E C to look into this and to potentially support a change in rule that would say for state charters within the traditional school district boundaries or X miles away. Like a circumference or something, because honestly, for the Rio Rancho bus to go into Burnaleo and pick up kids is closer than some of the places in Rio Rancho that they're picking up kids. So it just doesn't make sense for state charter school. And it doesn't, it reduces the number of high quality options for kids in towns and cities that don't have such an option. And so I'm, I'm really appealing to you to consider this, Julia. It's six forty-two, two-ten is the N Mac rule, six forty-two, two-ten, that reads students who attend an out of district school as a matter of choice are not eligible. I think when this was written, they were talking about, I don't want to go to my neighborhood school, not I want a charter school. And so I think there's some language change that needs to be made here, and I also think it needs to specifically address state charter schools to correct these inequities and am asking, appealing to you for support in my fight on this one. And I will share my notes on everything else too, but this was, that was the biggie is not only the added cost every single year. We've absorbed it every single year. Our governing council believes in having transportation and food from the get-go, always has. But prohibiting students from accessing transportation because of this rule is unfair, and I don't think it was, I think it was written without charter schools in mind and needs to have charter schools added. And with that, I'll stand for questions or follow up another day?
Thanks. I mean, I do know that Mike Ogos at SODA, he was told by PED even before I was on, that, because he used to run a bus into Baylin from Los Unus, and he was told he couldn't run that bus into Baylin.
That's correct. And the way we've gotten around it is that was section A that I read to you of the, of the rule, but sections B and C allow districts to establish policies and pay for it themselves. So that's how we got around it for this year with the Albuquerque school. But I think this is a much bigger issue than just funding, as I mentioned, and I do know of schools, I won't name them, but we do know of schools in Albuquerque who are still picking up in Rio Rancho. So it's all on how you label your routes on your sheet if they catch that it's not within the Albuquerque district. But we do know of schools that are still continuing to pick up in Rio Rancho. But I actually think that should be allowed, so not reporting that. But I am asking for support on getting a change that's more reasonable for state charters.
And I also know from a newspaper article that Hojo in Gallup was denied a couple, a couple of bus stops. PED was saying that they're, they're not needed, there wasn't enough kids on the buses. And they were telling them that they needed eighty-eight kids on the bus in order to run that route, and it's like, really? And they then apparently informed them, because they had the bus driver, they had the bus. So, but PED was denied them the funding for it. And then PED finally said, well, we're going to have to send someone out to ride the route to see if it can. So this is the first year, I think, a number of changes have taken place for decisions on transportation funding. So I don't know, Wayne, if you've been, if anything else has come your way with this.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, I, I don't have any more information on that right now. I know this is on our legislative agenda for the PCS and M.
Let me ask you, is the and, and maybe you don't have it fine tuned yet, is the ask for an increase in the funding for transportation so that the schools don't have to dip into, is that what you're looking at?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, what we're talking, that you've been talking about. One is that it's mandatory for all schools to be able to offer transportation when some just that's not going to be feasible. It doesn't. There's a lot of rural areas where you're just not going to get a bus, you're not going to get a bus driver, you know, there's just, there's. But also that funding needs to be increased for those schools who, who would like to provide transportation. I, I can tell you in some of the schools that I'm working with the difficulty of just finding a driver, in, in, just in the district school. I'm not talking a charter school, but finding a driver for the district school has been, has been very challenging.
Oh, well, any flea market in Las Cruces, there's, there's a booth there for recruiting bus drivers, any event, because they're just, they're they're unable to provide, they're obligated to provide the transportation, but they literally don't have the manpower to staff the, the buses. So I, I do, I do, and especially if you start going west, east, south, it becomes even more demanding. Becca?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know we've always wanted, you know, the just additional money for transportation and helping make sure schools get the that first year funding, but I actually do think, like, and I know that's more legislative, but what Karen just brought up with the out of district is really, really concerning to me. And, and it is, like, I really, now it's a, a massive equity issue because now if you live in a district where there's not any charters, you don't get access to a charter school through transportation. Like, that's basically what that's saying, and that's, that's the opposite of what we're trying to like promote with state charters. And I just think of, now, now I think of like Almagordo opening and there, I don't know if any, I mean, there's nothing around them. And, and I, I would love for school, students to come from outside Almagordo to be able to come up to Almagordo and get access to a charter school. And they're just, I mean, for it to not even be an option is, is really alarming, but for it to be a rule issue means we don't have to wait for legislation. But I, it might almost be more difficult to work through the PED on this. So I don't know if it would be the legislative subcommittee that would maybe, maybe we could write a letter to the secretary asking for a rule review and update and clarifying that, because that does make sense. And I remember I was actually an out of district kid when I was in middle school. And I, like, that was like the thing, right, of like, oh, if you're gonna go out of district to a different school, you don't get a, you don't get transportation, your parent has to take you. And so I know that that's what the intention is. But state charters that, you know, the, the intention is not to stay within a, a school district boundary, and so it just isn't applicable. So it really, I mean, technically, this could get fixed in the next like sixty to ninety days if PED would do it. So I don't know if it's the, maybe legislative subcommittee or maybe policy subcommittee needs to meet and talk and send a letter to the secretary, asking to go ahead and open up and like make a rule adjustment. We don't need legislature for that, and we don't need to wait. Like, that's something that can be course corrected much quicker and, but like I said, I don't know where the, I, I don't know if the PED is going to be in any kind of shape to do. I, I don't know. Ideally, I hope the new secretary-elect is, you know, willing to move forward on some issues too, but that's, that's what we really would, that's what we really need to happen. And I feel like we can actually make an impact and do it quicker.
Yeah, I agree. Karen?
Yes, true. I just wanted to say, comment to something you said about Hojo, two things. One is that I'm happy to hear that they were, well, not happy, but also being pushed about capacity of a bus. So we have that a capacity of a bus is seventy-one, and I will tell you that we can't fit more than fifty-five students, particularly when you have secondary kiddos, without them being out in the aisles, which is against the law. So they did, I will say PED school transportation did acquiesce on that and did allow us to do fifty-five per bus, but they still gave us fewer buses than we were initially requesting, despite the fact that we, we, being governing council, had approved paying the extra to do so. So, but as I mentioned, we did find a workaround with having a separate contract for three separate buses that the school pays completely on its own, so we can get kids from Burnaleo or Rio Rancho that want to go to a school outside that area. But I would like it seen changed, not just for Explore, obviously, but for others. And I think it's unrealistic to expect a full bus in a city like Gallup that is so widespread out. You would have kids on the bus for way too long. And that's not fair or equitable either. So bus, this push on maximizing, I understand, maximize public dollars, yes. But to the point of sacrificing on kids, no. So I'm happy to join any meetings you might have or any, provide any information you could need from us, but I appreciate your seemingly support, at least from some of the commissioners who've spoken. Appreciate that, and I'm happy to start a request for rule, but if the P E C wants to do that, that would be much better. Just let me know what I need to do, and I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it.
So, so you know Karen, and also we're already working on legislative fixes to this, on making sure, Hojo's example I always give, where buses from Galt McCann are driving right past Hojo kids and not picking them up. And, and the change there is just kind of a major shadow in terms of districts shall provide transportation to charter school children to get, you know, to get to the school along the route. And it's not an option, it's all public money for all the kids. And so that's kind of thinking on that, and we're thinking on that right now, just so you know. And as well, I know that Wayne brought this up, the idea of making sure the transportation is available for first year. Because schools would probably be able to even meet much more easily the, the number at which they're projecting their enrollment if they could provide transportation. And it's definitely an equity issue. Yeah, and you give people choice, that's really wonderful. But if you can't get your kid to school, what difference does the choice make? So we're working on that. That's for this coming session.
But our bigger issue, I think, has to come from rule. Right, yeah. And Hojo's, it wasn't a, a not, it wasn't a lack of a contract. It was PED not willing to fund for the bus stops.
That's the same, that's the same issue that we were having.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, thanks. We'll be in touch, Karen. Thanks.
Appreciate you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, I think we've covered B, which is the language change in the legislation, which I'm hoping will be part of PCS and M's, at least a consideration for, so that school districts can't say no. I mean, the only way they, I guess, if they don't have a bus, they don't have a bus. I mean, if you don't have a bus driver, you don't have a bus.
The legislative change would be very, very easy. You would strike locally chartered. Because it already says, a locally chartered charter school shall negotiate with the school district. If it read a charter school shall negotiate, so it's a very easy.
Easy fix.
A very easy fix. It's a political one, but it's, the, the drafting is easy.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, there'll be school districts that'll say, no, we can't do that. I know, but that's for another fight. Number nine, discussion on board acknowledgement. And this was brought up as establishing some kind of system for honoring and recognizing boards that are doing an exemplary job and, or possibly even satisfying all of their board requirements.
So it's kind of a combination of A and B. You know, I think boards that, where all of them have met all of their board requirements within a certain period of time, need to be called out for excellence. And maybe they're given a gold star. Okay, seriously, a gold star from the P E C. With, I don't know, however, just a gold star. Exemplary board is above and beyond. It's all of that, and this board is involved in such a way in the school and in the community. That they're going that extra mile as a state charter school. And when you go get a platinum award of some sort, and a state, set of state knives, I don't know. But, you know, having those be kind of the parameters of which you're basing acknowledgement.
Becca? I actually, that's, I totally agree. I think if we did, because I like the, I didn't think about like just meeting requirements, but I do think that's actually, like, I think that would be an easy acknowledgement at the end of every fiscal year to send out like a certificate of, you know, like, you know, this board has met every requirement for this year. And you're appreciated. Thank you, you know. But then I also, I really would love at the Charter School Conference for us to be able to present like a governing board of the year award. And it be, you know, like a combination of, obviously, they need to like do all the requirements and stuff, but, and I think Missy would be a really big part of verifying whatever we, whatever we get to. But I wonder if we, I think there's a couple of ways that I imagine we can do it. One, we can just open it up for like people to submit a board, right? I don't think a lot of people in the public are going to do that. I think it'd be head administrators. But then, once again, like, I think if you, if we look through like, you know, they're kind of like applications for board of the year, and then combine that with Missy's experience and a recommendation from like her experience throughout the year, I think we could, I think it'd be a great thing to acknowledge like an exemplary board every, or, or just even, just like governing board of the year from the P E C. I, and then I also think, in addition to that, it's a really good opportunity to get good boards' names out there in a more public setting, so that other schools, like, we always talk about them, like, sharing best practices and collaborating with each other and reaching out to one another. But if they don't even know who's a good one to reach out to, I mean, that's difficult. So I think it's also a, a good way for us to be like, hey, this is a great board. And then if there's another board struggling that's at the conference, be like, hey, let's talk to them and see, like, if we could do it at the beginning of the conference, and then they can meet other board members throughout the rest of the conference. I think it's a really, like, I don't think there's any, I can't imagine anything negative towards it. And then I, I love the idea of sending everyone who did what they're supposed to, an acknowledgement as well.
So, speaking of Missy.
Oh, Missy. I love, I love that you guys want to do this, because I've been wanting to do it for a while. But I think that there's some problems about the commission or the charter schools division elevating any one board in that kind of way. I have other ideas that, like, we could start out with, with the twenty, FY twenty-five conference, and then we could build on it, right? Maybe, maybe we could move towards some like great board of the year, but we certainly, we already have the person who has finished their training first. You know, the one board member who got all their training done first, there's, there's the board, the full board that got all of their training done. I, and I, I like the idea of like, you know, the boards that collaborate with one another. There are Red River and, and Roots and Wings, they, they share some people on their equity council, including some students, like, that's really great and collaborative. I just, I fear that it could be favoritism if you guys are like, this is the best board, like, it's a very, it's, I don't know, it's like judging gymnastics or, or synchronized swimming, like, it's, there's a lot of, there can be a lot of objective things.
So, the, the only thing I'll say, and Steve, maybe you can confirm this, but the, the School Boards Association, they do a school board of the year every year. PCS and M acknowledges boards of the year. So I'm, I'm, why do you think it would be appropriate for us?
They're not authorizers. They're not.
They're not authorizers. I, N S B A, they have small school, large school, and we do a board of the year, and we do a board member of the year. And I don't, I don't think it shows favoritism at all, because on the board, when I say like, board of the, when I'm saying any, all boards, if every board gets all of the requirements in on time and everyone's good, then all of them get a gold star because they met that basic requirement. And we want to acknowledge them. All of this should be done at the charter schools conference. We want to acknowledge them and say, is anybody here from, you know, whatever school? And, and because you're wanting to come up and get a certificate and literally a gold star that committee administrator or the board president can pin to his lapel with pride. That's super duper simple, and because it's so quantitative, nobody can argue with it. And now the board of the year, that can be a little, that's qualitative, and it's nominated with the N S B A. You're nominated generally by people in your district. Whether, whether it's teachers, whether it's a super, people that really want, and really doing some amazing things at that time at Santa Fe, so we did get board of the year. I don't know, I think it was like twenty thirteen or something when Joel was the super. And it was great. And it was because of all this work we were doing, you know, opening schools on time, under budget, new projects. I mean, all these different, you know, things that, that Joel had spearheaded in terms of accountability that the board had done. I mean, just all sorts of different things. Our environmental, I mean, my God, the awards we won for, I don't know, I can't remember what the grant was called. It's not a little grant, it's money that's available to districts. There's a reason when you drive around in Santa Fe, you see these amazing solar arrays around all of our schools. Because we applied for the money and got it, and many people don't. And so it's just really taking advantage of being created as a board in that way. And so I would say it's the school community and probably the admin that nominates that board, and they write an essay and they do all these things. And maybe there are two boards that are showing the award that year for exemplary, the platinum award, right? I don't think it shows, I disagree, I don't think it shows favoritism at all. And I think we're really kind of putting out there that you've stepped up and we want to acknowledge you and call you out for having stepped up.
Mr. Brown? Yeah, I, I love this idea. I think the more that we can shine, the better we are. And I, so I think for me, without, and I'm sorry, you, maybe some people might not like what I'm about to say, but I think we could give everybody the gold star for doing the basic level of like, do no harm and like getting your governing council stuff done. I also would think that we don't have to just pick one school. I mean, most places like, I'm going to humble brag for a second, but my organization, Indigenous Farm Hub, we edited New Mexico Magazine, you probably have seen this before, and we were, were nominated and won like a local hero award. And then when we went to the, we had like a little dinner in a nice place here in Santa Fe, my whole team came up. You know, we, it was just like a nice thing. And there was like, they had twenty different awards. We won for like cultural sustainability and preservation and agriculture. Then there was like the best distiller, and there was the best winery, the best like, you know, the small mom and pop shop or whatever, you know, it was all over the place. So I think that, I'm not saying we need to have fifteen different awards for our sixty schools that we work with, but I think we could have four or five or half a dozen, and it could be centered around the things that we care most about. The, 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 the school that's great at collaboration. The school that just knocked that out of the park for facilities this year, because that is like a huge thing. And we could be fun and adventurous around some of the other things. So I just think the more we can do that, the more we can show that, that, that matters. And we could have a voice, and the schools' communities could also have a voice in this process. Because I think that also shows, that's a good indication. I think people vote with their feet, right? Like, and their voice, like, if they're not, if we think one school is a really good one, that's doing, you know, the board is doing really awesome stuff. But like, there's no one from the school saying that, that's going to vote for it. I think that says something a little bit. But chances are, we're going to have people who are going to see this as a fun opportunity to, to shine on their school community and their board, which oftentimes does not get that much shining on. And so, in my mind, I would propose like, maybe we could have a couple, a couple, not, maybe we could have the council of the year, but also we could have a couple other ones that are connected to either superlatives or specific things that we care most about in terms of our values.
Implementing green programs, whatever. Okay, so the challenge of things like this is, is there anyone here that doesn't want to do something like this? Right, so the next, I mean, Commissioner, sorry. Is there any commissioner that does not want to do something like this? So the next step is always the hardest. How do we get started on it? And so I would say that the next step is putting together the award, you know, the awards committee or whatever it is, just the three people that work on a plan of how to implement this so that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we can be doing this. Does that sound reasonable? I'll think all that silence is a yes?
I don't even think we have to reach until twenty-five, twenty-six, Steve. We should be able to do it by this next June.
What is it? What is it?
Why can't we do it this June at the, at the conference in June?
It's June, it's June, whatever. I was, I was thinking it would, you know, June's great, love June. And yes, the next charter conference. And I would volunteer to be on that, you know, committee.
Thank you.
I'll volunteer. I don't know if you're calling, if you're asking for volunteers right now, but I like the idea, and I, I would love to do something like this.
I would like you to.
That's a Steve and Alan. Perfect.
Just let, that's not.
Waited just long enough.
It's not meeting till November first or after, okay? That's just.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
I'll be the pinch hitter in case, you know.
We can just start thinking up ideas until November first.
Yep. Think of something besides a gold star.
Agreed. Awesome. I love that. Thank you, everyone.
Logo. I think so. We could start collecting patches. Yep, yep, I know, I know. Okay, thank you all. Subcommittee updates. Charter performance has not.
There is a letter uploaded on reimbursements, if you want to look at it.
Sorry, I skipped, I did not mean to skip reimbursements. Aspirational here.
So the letter ten A is what I, I think is a draft of what's been signed previously and is supposed to be signed now.
So it was my understanding from prior conversations over a number of years, and most particularly, I think from last year specifically, that when commissioners were struggling with finding rooms within the two fifteen rate here in Santa Fe, that the direction had been given to the commission that there was a standing letter from the cabinet secretary acknowledging the commissioner's travel reimbursement over two fifteen. And in the conversation that the E C was having last Thursday, we became aware of the letter that's in the folder, which is the cabinet secretary simply giving permission for commissioners to travel. And my response was, we don't need the cabinet secretary's permission to travel. We are an independent commission, so therefore, the cabinet secretary does not have to authorize our travel. We're not employees of PED. There had been, and I always disagreed with it, but I understood D F A was requiring the letter from the cabinet secretary when our travel exceeded the two fifteen. And that was my understanding, that that was the letter that was, went with a commissioner's folio if their hotel room went over the two fifteen. So I was concerned with this letter because that's not what is needed, and it certainly should not be required by D F A. I don't know what we're going to do about it. But, you know, I'm just.
What? Either was it, you're going over two fifteen, whether it's here or anywhere else, you just have to show other hotels that are also significantly more costly than where you've booked.
Well, that's what came out. Well, that's what came out a week, week and a half ago, that you had to have this, the second quote. And that's fine if, if that's what's being accepted.
And how does one know it's actually going to be accepted?
I don't know. I don't know. I can't answer that. I'm assuming it is going to be. But I can't, but I don't have any answer to that.
Well, it can't be something that also, if it goes through PED, that they put the brakes on just because they don't like it. Um, the way that happened with some of the other, there were others, some things that I guess that didn't get to DFA that we thought they would, but they, they stopped here on the third floor because someone read whatever paragraph the way they read it, which was different than it had been read in the past. What would be, what do we need to do to make this happen? We need to take Mariana to lunch? It's Mariana, is that her name?
I'm not sure that the letter's been signed. I mean, it's a draft letter.
The secretary wrote?
That's the new letter for, my understanding is that replaces the letter that was there from last year. So that this is just an updated letter, that the letter has existed every fiscal year. So this is just the updated letter. That's my understanding. Um, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a huge issue with a second quote because I can quote you the end of the day, I'm a Sasi, you know? So that's, um, I don't think that's an issue. But I don't have an answer for, is it going to be turned back?
This, this letter indicates, it says in there, the, I'm sure you've read it, this advanced approval will remain in effect until withdrawn by the secretary designate.
Right.
So I mean, it should still be in effect from last year unless they've withdrawn it.
Except that letter doesn't, doesn't address the hotel fees.
Over.
Over 215. That's just saying, I'm giving permission for commissioners to travel, which we don't need. I've always disagreed with the cabinet secretary having to approve over the 215, but we've never been able to get over that hurdle. So that when it became a big issue last year, it was my understanding, and that's what had been communicated to us, that there was, commissioners don't have to get a letter every time from the cabinet secretary because there's one sitting in the file and it's just automatically attached to the folio. And then we were told last week, no, that's not that letter. The letter is just giving permission to travel, which I was offended by. I'm sorry.
Who pinned this letter? It says to Mariana through Amanda DeBelle and. So, so, so this is from Karina? What it says?
I don't know. I don't have it pulled up. So I don't know if it's the email that she's sending to them or it, I don't think Karina is the author of the letter. I don't think so.
It says to, uh, the secretary from, through Amanda DeBelle from Karina Tava.
It looks like the form that needs to be signed, um, each time we.
So like, no, no. So, um, I think, oh, Becca, sorry.
I am, so I, I feel like I remember in my brain when this first came up and how the 215 played into it. So if you look at the letter, this is, and I, this is just what I remember, which maybe it was wrong back then. I don't know. But, um, so because I, and, and I, I agree. I don't know why it needs to get re-signed because the one that's here is signed from Secretary Romero in May. And it says until withdrawn, so we should still be good without a new one. But, um, except for, oh, actually, it says for FY '24 and FY '25. So maybe this one is the next one for FY '26. Is that what it is? But anyways, so this one is, it says a, um, basically that we have to travel and so, um, that we don't need to give advance notice. And that's why they were saying the like, going over 215 and not having to provide the quotes is part of that like, advance notice that this letter makes it to where you don't have to do that. Because like, having to go over the 215 is advance notice, basically. You have to get the quotes in advance. You have to do, like, you have to do all those things in advance. And that's what I remember them saying of like, this basically allows to where the, getting the quotes in advance is not necessary because this letter says all their travel is approved in advance. Um, and that's.
Not, that's all always communicated to us.
No, now, I know, but I think, but I think it was the same letter, but the communication was different previously. So that's, but I think that's where we're remembering. And that's why we've never had to provide 215, the quote, like, I've gone over 215 on, on a couple of occasions where, I mean, and it was like a struggle to try to get anywhere near 215 because the hotels were so expensive in the area. Um, and we didn't, I didn't ever give, um, I've never given multiple quotes. And I think they were saying it's because of that letter is why we were kind of able to not have to do that. So if it's changed, then that's, that's what's different, um, is the communication about it. But that was the, that was actually the purpose of the letter to start with.
So.
So I want to go back even further to when I believe this started to come up as an issue. And it's right with all committee and board and had to do with, um, Indian market. And that there was no place to get rooms within the, you know, cost parameters at all. And I, I seem to remember that it was, um, Karina who said, well, you don't have to do that because we're, you know, the rooms at that amount, all the rooms are much more. Um, you just have to show, pretty much show that you're making an effort to find a room within a certain, that's reasonable. But that's, that just strikes me as moving the familiar as to why the whole hotel rooms cost specifically came up. Maybe it wasn't glad, I don't know.
Because she doesn't, she would not stay here. Yeah. Yeah. When you first came on, we met for an entire year, virtually. Well.
So is the new, is the new requirement for the quotes, it's just what, whenever, whatever day we book a hotel, we, we also need to just screenshot other hotels in the area? Even if it's like, because I mean, I, I don't book too far in advance because I sometimes don't know if I can come up or not. So I'll book like pretty close to it. So like telling in advance and getting advance approval, I don't, I don't know if that is as possible, but it, do I just need to provide quotes when I turn in my packet?
That's what I did the last time we were someplace that was much over 215. It wasn't Oakland, it was, uh.
It wasn't Alamo Gordo.
Yeah. There were those two people over there took our rooms, where the secretary, the deputy took our rooms. I don't even remember.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, I can't remember, yeah, it's the longer story, but, um, no, I remember Becca, in that case, when I traveled. No, I just showed the, the, uh, the codes from those other hotels at the time I put in my expenses. I didn't do it in advance. I didn't, I've not done advance for anyone, for anything.
So what is the level of like quote, so I, I literally have never done quotes on anything ever. So what is the level of detail? Like, can I go to like, um, booking.com and just like screenshot the first three quotes from the, from the front page and they're all on one screen? Or do I need to go to each individual hotel and get like, go all the way to checkout and print out the checkout page? Like, I, I don't know what I'm doing.
So, um, usually when we get quotes, it's for, um, the same, has to be booked for the same days, amount of days. So you could do that because you're entering that into the computer, Becca, um, to get prices. But I'm still concerned about it too, because one of the employees up there told me that's what we needed. And I have been trying to reach out to Jessica and she hasn't, um, responded to me. So I'll reach out again first thing in the morning.
Okay. So for this, I think, I'm sure I'm okay. Um, because I'm special, but for this, for this meeting, when commissioners are staying and they turn in their materials to you, do they just need a screenshot with, because I thought the email said you needed one other quote.
Um, you need, uh, three quotes, so while including your hotel reservation, so that'd be two quotes.
So you, so they could just do a screenshot of, you know, from Expedia, here's two hotels.
That are more expensive.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And just that screenshot and turn it into you.
That I know of, but I'm, I don't know if that employee was talking out of place, so I gotta.
Now, what about the NACA conference? Is because.
I think you're, you're staying at the host hotel, so you should be fine.
I mean, I'm only $5 over for night, but, so I don't think, um, I don't think the letters serves any purpose anymore.
I think, well, it does.
At DFA.
I'm sorry.
It does serve a purpose for when you, um, travel and I have to turn in something that you have permission to travel.
But why does the cabinet secretary, who has no authority over us, give us permission to travel?
The secretary, the cabinet secretary, the designated secretary, whichever one's in there, they always sign your ISTEs of a hotel is over $215.
But so, so, so we're going back again. If I'm under 215, so that letter is only referring to people who are exceeding the 215?
There's a generic letter that says advanced okay to process the travel, right?
The secretary doesn't sign anyone's. Yeah.
Go ahead, Becca.
It's, the secretary doesn't have to go, we don't have to wait for the secretary to have to sign all ours individually anymore. Because he did, he did the one blanket one, so it actually removed a step every time. Every time we submit ever, he doesn't, he didn't have to do any, it just went straight to.
So this letter that, this new letter is because there's a new secretary, right? So there's a new letter that says it's okay to process the travel. It's not giving you permission to travel because we know that you must, because you're on the commission. But in order for DFA to process the travel, they need to know that the cabinet secretary has, um, okayed it. So that letter is accompanied with your travel. Um, and it, and it maybe used to conflate the hotels over 215 or not. I, I'm looking for an old letter. You probably remember that at one point it did. Um, I, I don't know.
Seen the letter. It's been told that a letter existed, but never had iPhone letter.
That's the new letter. And I remember there was an old letter and, and at one point, you know, there was a question, do we, do, does the PEC need to put in a travel request? And the answer, and this is probably when Becca was chair, the answer was no, let's just get this advanced letter. I also have the advanced letter. Um, but if, if Dr. Russell or if Missy Brown wanted to travel, then before they go, there has to be something that gets signed by a couple of people. All right. So that's the, it has to be attached to your travel reimbursements, okay? Uh, you can fight it. You can go to GSD and knock yourself out trying to get rid of that requirement. I think that's, that's up to you. Um, as for the hotel rooms 215 and above, I, Consuelo, can you just clarify like what your understanding is? Uh, when that's required and if there, okay, so you're good on that.
We're good on that.
Okay. Well, then I don't think.
But I don't think that letter expedites anything because Consuelo said the cabinet secretary is still signing each of our ISTEs. Correct?
That letter does.
Hotels over 215. And that letter does expedite your.
Okay. So honestly, this all seems kind of moot. The letter is automatically just put in our stuff. So we don't need to discuss this anymore.
I, I, you know, it was your choice to discuss it. Um, I know it, uh, like, perception wise.
About the 215. So we needed to discuss it.
I think, I think what I remember is, is that, and, and maybe, maybe this is where I may be misremembering, but I, and I think I unders, I actually understand the issue. They're kind of like more, they're two separate things. So the letter is so that the secretary doesn't sign every single one of our travel packets, which goes into his queue, right? And then they have to go like, we get in, into the secretary's signature queue takes, it, it, it just takes more time. So this allows us to skip that queue and go straight to DFA. I do believe when they, when they started this, I'm pretty sure this did also, um, basically exempt us from getting this secretary's signature for over 215 as well. Um, if that's not the case, I don't, I don't like, I just remember them being like, if you ever book anything over 215, it's never a problem. It will always get approved. Don't worry about it. So I think the quotes are totally separate. I see like how we've been doing it is it, this, the new letter, so I, the only, it looks to me, the only reason we have a new letter is because it's specific on the fiscal years. So even though it says at the end that it'll remain in effect until withdrawn, because they have the fiscal years at the top of the letter, that's why we have to get a new one. So the last one that was signed was for the last fiscal year. This one's for the next fiscal year. Um, but the 215 thing, I think they were using this letter to like, to where the secretary wouldn't have to sign the 215 overages as well. If that changed, I mean, whatever, as long as they keep doing it. And then I think the, the, a separate issue is just having to provide those quotes is just a new, but just like how we've had a bunch of different new requirements in travel that have nothing to do with like, signature or, or permission or anything like that. They just keep giving us different stuff to do. It's just one of those things that if, if we do go over 215, it will get approved as long as we can show that there are two other hotels that were more expensive on those days. It shouldn't be a problem. Like the secretary's not going to not sign us. It's, it's the DFA issue. Is what my understanding of this problem.
And I explained that if you guys send me a reservation, I'll pull the quotes for you. I'm happy to do that.
Right. And I appreciate that. I do. I do.
It makes sense to me now, though. Now it, now it's making sense. But they are, it felt like it was like, um, it felt like the issues were layered and they're like actually separate.
Okay. Item number 11, Subcommittee Updates. Charter Performance Group has not met. Budget has not met since last month. Policy has not met. Food service. I don't think there's an.
Has not met.
Okay. Uh, just so if, if commissioners aren't aware, the, um, the rule is going to be adopted, I think on the 24th.
It already, it already was, it was adopted. Um, and they basically like remove every single one of those things that we were like saying were kind of really difficult for schools. Those basically were all removed. I mean, they really did listen to the, the feedback that they got and, um, very much simplified it uh, to where there's, I don't, I don't know if there's any schools that are having any reservations about what's.
So you go on to the PED website, then do the dropdown menu for policy. When you get on the policy site, there's a, there's a link for rules. You can also, on there, sign up for automatic notices for rule proposal and rule adoption and you'll get an email for that.
Thank you.
Uh, Legislative has not met. I did send out the talking points, um, which will probably be updated as we meet, but you've got on the base for, um, no, I don't think at this point in time, no. I think the legislative subcommittee should meet first.
So I was just asking, can we use those talking points?
Sure. Yep. Absolutely.
You got forward them, can I forward it to Michael Pedia?
Sure.
If he asked me to.
Sure.
Just give you an update, that I have heard that Legislative Council is seriously, seriously backed up on legislation, on draft legislation, like, potentially three months backed up. So getting draft legislation, if something is going to be proposed on any of these things...
Okay.
They're so backed up.
Okay.
Julia, if they're so backed up, is this something that we would ask you to draft?
I don't do the legislative stuff.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, a legislator is the only one that can open up a file at Legislative Council. Um, if you give them, I mean, people I know are giving drafts to Legislative Council, because it speeds up the process, but you still have a...
Big lag time.
Well, you need a legislator who's going to be willing to open up a file.
Okay.
Okay, uh, liaisons. I booked my stay in Silver City last week. And then the LESC changed, and the LESC and the LFC are meeting right now in Albuquerque. So obviously, unable to attend those. I should be in Silver City next month, um, LESC. But they, because they're having a combined LFC, LESC, unfortunately, budget discussion that I'll have to look at after the fact. So that's why they're, they're down at, I think, Atresco Heritage High School, um, today and tomorrow. So, um...
Gwen Warneman...
Gwen resigned as Executive Director of the LESC. They have not, um, appointed a new Executive Director yet. Indian Education?
There was a meeting, um, in Indian Education yesterday. However, I didn't connect in. My prob, it, it isn't the committee's problem, it's mine. Um, every time I have been out in the field and have gone to, I've tried to connect in from wherever I was meeting, I haven't been able to. So I don't know if it's my laptop or if it's the service that's there, but I did call them afterwards, and they said, "It's fine." It was a short meeting. So I'll try again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ingham?
So we did meet, um, both the AMS and, uh, and, uh, the PSCOC met last week, uh, well, AMS met the week before. Uh, we're very much wrapped around the axle about teacherages and funding, um, teacher housing and how that's all going to work. And it's been a very rigorous affair, and that we spent most of our time working on that. Um, I, I think there are some issues that we, we will need to discuss with, um, that I would love some input from, from you, Patty, about what we need to bring to the PSCOC, because I think there's, it's really important right now to get, get something, uh, on their agenda as far as the lease reimbursements and increasing those lease reimbursements. So I would like to know how to address that if we can. But, um, other than that, there wasn't, there wasn't anything significant as far as charter schools. There, there is some issues. I, I don't remember if I brought this up last week, but PSFA has brought to my attention that we've had a couple of schools that have changed, um, changed locations and didn't inform PSC, PSFA when they, when they changed. And, um, they did not get preapproval to do that, and it's a real big problem. PSFA has gone and, and done what they need to do. But we need to remind our schools that they're, that if you're going to make a, a change in your facility, you, you definitely need to, uh, get that pre-approved through PSFA, because they, they really get, um... And, and there's one last thing I'm just going to bring up, and it might be new business. We, I've gotten a lot of complaints with some of, uh, the schools in the, in the South Valley of Albuquerque, uh, that are causing their parent drop-off is becoming a really big problem. And, um, I don't know how we're going to address that. I know with APS, they have big problems with that in almost every school. But I've got, I, I think we're going to have to, uh, maybe look at that in some opportunity to, um, address that, because I think we're going to get in trouble with, we're going to have somebody get hurt at a parent drop-off.
What the reason the problem is?
Well, just one school in particular has the traffic backed up for an hour on course. That's kind of problematic.
So Commissioner Brower and I are so happy to have this discussion, because, um, we've, we've dealt with it with another school. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. Um, we actually have no authority over that.
Well, good then, I guess.
We don't. We don't. And trans, if I remember correctly, even transportation doesn't have a whole lot of in, uh, input into that. Um, it is really local authorities, if they choose to step in and do something. But for us, we have no skin in, in that game. So it doesn't, it, it often comes to us, but we have no ability to tell a school how they do drop off and pick up.
Okay, and I, I understand that. I'm going to say we're, by, where we end up having schools, uh, where their, uh, facilities are available and stuff like that, um, is, is, um, causing some real angst in the community. And, and so I, I guess the reason I thought that might be something we need to talk about is that, um, we're, we're, we're giving approval to schools in, in, in those areas and that it just, um, and this is just my feeling about it, is that we don't want to be really bad neighbors in our schools. And, and when we have, uh, uh, schools causing a big problem in the community, I, you know, we don't have, uh, um, authority. Maybe we have some, I don't know what to say.
Well, and I'm going to say for newer schools, like, I know when Solari came on board, Albuquerque required, they had to spend a lot of money. Uh, in fact, their build was delayed because they made them do this very extensive traffic study in order to get that permit. So I know it's tougher when there's schools that are already, already there, and we've allowed expansion. And that's where it sometimes gets to be an issue. But we don't have the ability to say no because of traffic issues.
Okay, um, just, uh, we don't permit through the city?
We don't.
Public schools don't permit through the city?
Well, I would have, I would, I would give you, like, two suggestions, uh, because I know Stuart, and I don't think anyone else knows about this, this is for you and me, uh, no one else is here, but we spent so much time, almost my entire time as the charter school director, was about traffic.
Yep.
Um, with one specific school. And it finally got resolved. It's not an issue now. But I would say, Stuart, like, if you have a school, my biggest piece of advice is, like, are they meeting with the local, uh, community neighborhood associations? If they're not, they need to start connecting with them if there's an issue, because they're drumming up issues right now. Uh, and so it would be really good for the school to work with the local neighborhood association. They got to figure out what's going on. And that the city, City of Albuquerque is the prevailing, uh, entity that needs to be involved in thinking through what needs to happen. Uh, things that have happened in the past was, like, there was a two-way street uh, with parking on both sides of a one particular school, and they finally changed and reconfigured that so that it was, it gave relief to everyone uh, in the moment of, like, arrival and departure. And so those are things that we have no authority over. Um, and it has nothing to do with our decision to approve or deny a school. Uh, that's really the City of Albuquerque, to kind of work with the school, to kind of reconfigure what needs to happen there. So those are my two things. Work with City of Albuquerque, and that you should say that to the school, and then work with their neighborhood association, so it doesn't become, um, like a pitchfork and burn, burning torches towards one of our schools, because that's what's going to happen.
It already has.
Yeah, even if they're a local city councillor or county commissioner, depending on what entity, you know, has, you know, local, um... I would also recommend working through them, that maybe they can help to host a community meeting to try to get some, you know... There, there's probably not, because I know my local elementary, traditional public school, it's the same, I mean, those, I, you know, I am, too often, it's late that I realize I'm in the line for pickup, because I'm a, I'm a mile away from this, from the school, and I think I'm just in the line for the stop sign. So it's a problem in any neighborhood school. I, you know, we acknowledge that. Um, but I, I think to try to be a good partner in the community and for that school to try to just, you know, look like they're trying to, to work with the community. Commissioner Karina?
So not to invalidate the concerns of drivers, it's just, it's 315. You know there's going to be traffic on Jaguar Drive. Go another route. It's like that at every school in all these communities. You know, at a certain time in the morning in the afternoon, it's drop-off. There's going to be traffic. Go another route. Yeah, a little bit. I don't, I try not to go down Abahada, but go another route.
Oh, and if you live by me, sometimes there's not an alternate route. Yeah, yeah. So just, you know, that tactical team was out in my neighborhood, there was no place to go. Okay, um, Nipsey?
Attended the meeting, uh, earlier in the month. Uh, nothing significant to report. Will be attending the meeting next, uh, I guess it's two weeks from now, uh, on the third. So that's our next meeting. Um, and we'll see if I have something to report at our next meeting. Thank you.
Nibs Ba?
Spoke with Joe, canceled the thing for December for us. We look at possibly February, those contract times, so, uh, there you go.
Library Commission?
So I have happy news that the Library... The Library Commission is scheduled to meet the first part of October. So look forward to a very lengthy report next meeting. Is this the very first one? Okay.
Okay, um, and we don't have anything for H. So we're good. We are adjourned till tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.